Started.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Patty roll call please.
Mrs. Chamberlain.
Here.
Mrs. Saylor.
Here.
Mrs. Corey.
Here.
Mr. Dilks.
Here.
Colonel Henske.
Here.
Dr. Jones.
Here.
Dr. McCloy.
Here.
Mrs. Schumaker.
Here.
Thank you.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, this is to announce that adequate notice of this meeting was given in the following manner. On May 30th, 2021, notice of this meeting was transmitted to the Burlington County Times, filed with the township clerk, and posted in the office of the Business Administrator Board Secretary. Additional information was included to inform the public that this meeting was being held remotely utilizing Zoom. Notification was also posted on both the district website and the district app. I direct the Business Administrator Board Secretary to enter this statement into the minutes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda. So I want to do the committee. The committees first, and then we'll have Colonel Henske do his presentation for the COVID Ops Advisory Committee. Then we'll open it up to public comment and the coffee and conversation that we plan on having. That way we can just get into it and go through it until we're done. Can I get a motion?
Back in, Vicki.
Okay. Jones.
Just an all in favor.
Can I get an all? Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everybody opposed? Everybody abstained? All right. Thank you. Hopefully this will go nice and smooth. So we're gonna skip to number seven, Education Technology Committee. Dr. Jones?
So there's three topics that Mr. Bannon and I kind of put on the agenda. Just real fast, the first one's talking about iReady mathematics, which is the proposed new resources for upper level math classes. Linkit, which would be a replacement for map testing, and Olson Academic Leaders versus National Junior Honor Society. So Sean, you and your staff. It's your ballgame.
Absolutely. Is it Gallagher?
Well, first off with the iReady mathematics. For the past four months, we did extensive research. We looked at ed reports, consumer ed reports. We then got samples from different companies, and then we met with companies with the teachers. We decided on iReady or Ready Mathematics. It automatically has benchmarking involved with it, so the students from grades six through eight will take the benchmarks, and it will create individualized paths for each student. So it's really targeting specific needs on each student in mathematics from grade six to eight. Now, this does not include the algebra students or the geometry students because they take the high school course, and they're following that resource. For Linkit, we also did a pilot program of 14 teachers. We've been going back and forth, debating between Linkit and MAPS. So the Linkit pilot program, we had teachers from kindergarten through eighth grade in all different subject areas in the middle school. We met numerous times, and they also took a survey, and it was 100% of the staff supported changing to Linkit. So Linkit is a standard-based grade-level assessment, and they will take it three times in the year. So once they take in the beginning of the year, right off the bat, you're identifying the needs of each student individually. And this will be great for if there is learning loss with COVID. We are right away tackling it head-on and finding out what our individual students need, and it will create a path, and it will target those needs for each student, and that will help with small group instruction as well. So math, the MAPS test is an adaptive test. So what that means is when you take it, if you get a question right, it gets harder and harder, and if you get a question wrong, it gets lower and lower, and the data is not as specifically targeted as Linkit. So moving forward, we decided as a district to move forward with Linkit with teacher recommendations and meetings. And I think that's it for those two.
Are we asking questions as we go? I have a question.
I do too.
Okay.
My question is with the Linkit, what happens to all the information that you have gathered over the years from MAPS?
So actually, Linkit, and I missed that piece. Linkit is also a hub of data. So all of our data from Encores, from MAPS testing, from NJSLA, automatically, it already happened, we transferred it into Linkit. So you have actually a snapshot of each child and see the path they started with in kindergarten going to eighth grade. Everything's in the same spot. So it really will help with interventions.
It also creates a parent portal, which is one of the big things that's tough when you're using MAPS, is that right now a parent has to request or sheet, or we send home the reports at the end of the MAPS testing. For Linkit, there's actually a parent portal where a parent can log on and see the actual progress. Gives better data directly to the teachers. One of the things that we were very thrilled about, talking with our pilot team and looking for them as well, is you can actually, as a teacher, find out which specific question a student had and what standard specific it is right away. Whereas MAPS, we wanted to find out that data, and again, MAPS is also based on Common Core, not the New Jersey Learning Standards. Way to wait until the entire testing cycle was done, and then the following year, they can give us a full data spreadsheet on standards. It was a much different process where this is actionable as soon as the testing is done. Here you go. Here's you have, and the testing is also shorter for Linkit. So it doesn't take as much time out of the actual day as right now. We did MAPS, we had to close down, for instance, OMS for hours to get this done. Linkit is a much faster assessment, but it gives it much better targeted information to enable the teacher to improve their instruction immediately for that student.
Mrs. Gallagher, just out of curiosity, I know, Sean, you mentioned there's a parent portal, which I'm happy to hear. Is it easier to understand for the parents than MAPS is currently?
So yes, because actually, based on percentage scores, it's not based on a RIT score. But we have to remember too, and this is gonna be an adjustment, and we'll have more information now to that, it's a percentage scores of the whole year. So your percentages aren't gonna be high scores. When the NJSLA, when you pass, when you get exceeding expectations or meeting expectations, they don't really, it's based on data points. It's based on points. So you're getting like a 60 when you're meeting expectations or exceeding expectations on the state assessment. I mean, they're not very, they don't tell us that, but that's really what it is. So it's actually the scores of Linkit translates to what your scores would be on the NJSLA. So it's very, it's equal.
Does it like explain kind of what this is?
Yeah, it says like approaching, there's actually something called a bubble, which the bubble means you're meeting expectations, but you're the bottom 10%. So it's gonna help the teachers as well to hit those students as well. What do we need to address to get those students to the next level to make sure they meet the expectations?
Melissa, just kind of following up, because I know we talked about it in ed tech last month, is that you guys, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Linkit about it or internally about trying to create kind of an explanation sheet for parents to be able to understand MAP this spring effectively versus Linkit that fall, because they are two different set of metrics, testing very differently so that parents can understand, because a lot of parents are used to MAP. And so this would be different, and that, I don't know, did Linkit, were they gonna be able to do it, or is it really gonna have to be in-house?
I actually met with Linkit earlier this week and asked them, can they please give us resources to communicate with the families for the transition? And they already have resources available, and we can also modify for our needs for Tabernacle School Districts.
Thank you. That makes me feel a little better, because as a parent of a smaller kid who, you know, this was relatively new to, despite being on the board, it was hard to explain, hard to understand MAPS, so I'm glad to see that.
It is. RIT scores are tricky. They're not a normal percentage.
Thank you.
You've already said that the kids will be testing three times a year?
Yes.
Is that all the kids?
All the kids in Linkit will be testing three times a year. Now, for grades six through eight in mathematics, only that group, they're gonna take the iReady, because we purchased that, and it comes with our program, and it's an individualized path for mathematics. So everyone's gonna be taking it three times a year, beginning, middle, and end.
But the actual testing time, just so you know, Mrs. Chamberlain, is not as long as it would have been for MAPS. So we're saying they're testing, you know, the frequency from two times a year for MAPS to three times a year for this. You're not actually taking as long of a day to test it, so you can get three testing done, get those data points without it taking away as much from actual normal school day.
Melissa, can you clarify something for me? I think I heard this correctly. And I've already had an engagement with you around test scores for my daughter, and so what I heard tonight's a little bit different than what I understood before. I just wanna make sure where we are. So with Linkit, the kids will be tested on the entire year's worth of material?
Yes.
Regardless of if it's the first, second, or third test of the year?
Correct.
So if they pull a 60, it's not a panic situation because they haven't been taught the material?
No, and honestly, your first, the first benchmark should not even be that high.
Right, so.
Low scores, because we haven't taught that data yet.
That's good, that's good to know and comforting to know, based on my own interaction around my daughter's scores. But what is the point in testing the kid on stuff they haven't been taught yet as a measure of teaching effectiveness and their ability to learn, remember, and retain information?
And you're targeting, well, it's to target those standards that they really need to work on for the school year. Sometimes when they come in, the standards you see in seventh grade, sometimes you see in eighth grade, so that the teachers need to hone in on those standards. If the whole, if the whole class understands it, you know what's really target and not target at that time. And then when you go for the mid-year, now you're gonna see the growth of each one. Okay, what did we address? What needs to still be improved? What can we target? What can we use a small group? Because maybe it's a group of kids who don't understand a standard, or individualized, hey, little giant doesn't understand this standard, let me work with him individually on that.
So in this instance, though, this would have been, let's call it equivalent to the third of three tests when this.
Pilot?
Yeah, the pilot.
It's a little, it would be earlier than we would give the last.
So a little bit early, but definitely towards the later third of the year.
Yes.
So then those percentage scores are more relevant at that point?
They should be, yes.
Okay.
And the one other thing, just kind of, because Melissa, I know you didn't mention it this one, but we did have it before, is that the special education teachers were really happy about this because the accommodation options in Linkit aligned far better with the accommodations that our students can have on the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. Whereas MAP really was limited. So for our special education population, it had a lot of potential for getting a better read of how they would do, because the testing conditions were more similar, correct?
Yes, and also for BSI students, it tiers our students for us. So it tells us if they're a tier one or tier two or a tier three. And if we're getting something that's tier three in mid-year, we know what we need to address immediately.
Any other questions?
So the third item we had for this committee was about OAL and New Jersey National Junior Honor Society. Last time we met as a committee, and this was not in a community whole setting, we discussed, we said that, you know, the admin team had no feeling one way or the other. You know, we were very much open to it. We actually posed a question for the committee to ask what you, the committee felt. At that time, we'd agreed to do a survey of our students to get a better sense, or our students wanted to decide how to move forward.
Actually, Sean, if I may, I don't think we ever agreed to survey the students, just to clarify that.
Yes, it was in.
I don't recall that.
It was in tech.
Right, I was in the meeting. I don't recall that we agreed to survey the kids.
I remember we did.
Okay.
Thank you. So we did generate a survey, and again, we wanted to make sure as a survey, we realized the students may not know about National Junior Honor Society. So we did have a link in the survey for them to learn more about this, and we did say that, you know, we currently do this, but we're considering this, and asked them, you know, quite simply, which one do you prefer, and why do you choose that? From those responses from our students, we did have 67.6% of our students who did say that they preferred the idea of moving or keeping, I'm sorry, maintaining OAL. And instead of moving towards National Junior Honor Society, some of them did talk about it, that they liked that it was easier for them to get into, good or bad, because again, National Junior Honor Society requires additional things beyond grades. OAL's entrance criteria is grade-based solely. So they try to really community service aspects once they get into it. Other students did talk about how they do like the fact that it's ours, it's not a national thing. Or some of the people who chose the other side did think that it was a positive, that it was a national organization, and therefore they wanted it. Because of, they liked the idea that it was something that was nationally recognized, and something other schools have. So, but again, like I said, that was the survey results, and I told the committee that we would share them with the results. And again, we discussed last time that we were going to move ahead with what the students have. Now, obviously, if the committee and if the board as a whole would like us to move in a different direction, as the admin team had previously stated at our last ed tech meeting, that is something that we honestly, okay with the committee's decision. Ultimately, we feel that, you know, both organizations provide a positive opportunity for our students to move something in terms of Honor Society, often being something that is ours. Naturally, the junior society being something that is, again, a different level. And again, there are different criteria points that we have to establish. It was my understanding, I guess, in years past, that one of the sticking points on this was a financial sticking point only. And if that's the case, that the annual fee for National Junior Honor Societies is $385. It's not an insurmountable amount. So I'd hate to see, if you know, that should not be our only stumbling block, is it a financial cost? But ultimately, again, like represented, I know that we had said at the committee last time that we would move on whatever direction the students did choose. But again, if the committee wants us to do something differently, please let me know.
Sean, I think the student input was really important. I'm curious about the teachers, because it is a lot more involved with the Honor Society. Would the teachers be on board with that? Did they have preference?
We, the advisors from the OAL, they're, you know, they said, you know, whatever we want to do ultimately, they'll do. But again, we did not do a full staff survey of this, because we really wanted this as an opportunity to have our students have their voice be heard. I know so many times this year, I know we did a lot of parent surveys for issues related to student staff safety and cell warmth, which totally is something that the parents should be, have their voice heard first and foremost. But this was an issue, I believe, as a committee, we talked about the idea of letting our students have the opportunity to express their voice. But we really wanted to go for that target area.
My only hesitation with this, well, there's several actually. One, are you gonna let them vote on it every year now? Because you're kind of setting us up for that. And two, there's no, there's no connectivity to this when they go to high school. High school is National Honor Society. It is a known entity that, you know, our kids used to have, you know, it wasn't programmed for them, and I get, you know, there were reasons why it was changed. But I gotta tell you, I don't, I don't see that this has the legs that National Honor Society has when they're going to high school. I don't know that it gives them that oomph.
However, being in the Junior Honor Society does not necessarily mean that they're automatically in the National Honor Society in high school, which doesn't occur until junior year.
It does not impact, I've been on the Lenape Faculty Committee for years. I backed off a few years ago. I was a little busy. But the metrics that the Lenape Regional High School District uses for National Honor Society does not take into account anything done in like the five to eight. It is based off of their community service and involvement in the school and academics when they're in high school. So there, it really is too separate regardless of whether we were to choose National Junior Honor Society, or if we were to choose OAL. It would not impact their opportunities at the high school level.
No, but it impacts their thought process, because
Absolutely.
if I'm in, you know, AOL, OAL versus I'm in National Junior Honor Society, it's something. It makes them want to do stuff. It makes them get engaged.
Right.
I'll, I'll agree with Judy on that completely, considering my daughter was in Junior National Honor Society. And then that sets a tone and a mindset once she went to high school. And that really set her up for going into National Honor Society and doing some really good things in Seneca that she just, it built when she was in that, and, you know, she went through Southampton, so they had that. That's what she did. So I think it, I think it grooms them for what to expect in the future and how to progress.
Just so you know, Mr. Henske, or Colonel Henske, Southampton has since gotten rid of that program. We actually met with all their middle school principals to find out what they were doing. And Southampton was actually one of the ones that said they get, they no longer have that. They made their own Honor Society.
I guess they're lucky I'm not on their board then.
But that was one of the conversations, because we actually had at a middle school principal's roundtable in the wintertime, conversations came up about Honor Societies, what people are doing and what they're not. And we were one of the ones that said that we had been able to move forward, having our Honor Society this year. We were doing certain things. And a big question that came up was obviously with the community service hours with COVID restrictions that were actually negatively impacting a lot of the groups and being able to say that we can actually have our members join this year. Us having, since ours was dependent on grades only, that was something that made it a little bit easier for us to get our students to get into that process. And then therefore, once they got in, they chose their community service projects they wanted as an organization, as opposed to having to do them as entrance in.
But doesn't a grade-only organization disturb anybody else? I mean, it's just like, that's one factor of what you're supposed to be doing in school. That's not, you know, there, there, there needs to be more. I mean, that's what we're trying to grow our kids to do, you know? I get, it's like, you know, you okay, you don't meet the mark on that one, so you're not gonna get in that society, and everybody gets in there, okay, great, I'm in this society. But there isn't a stressor to do more as a person. I just, I don't know, I think it limits our, I think it limits our kids and doesn't challenge them the way it needs to challenge them. That's my personal opinion.
I think, I think when we started the conversation, wasn't it that OAL, they, they weren't doing anything? Or the kids felt they weren't doing anything? I think that's what started the whole conversation. And I think, Sean, you were going to, I think you did look into that, but then, of course, COVID hit, so that became a problem.
Yeah, but you can't tell me it became a problem, because the scouts have been doing community service projects since COVID hit, like.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is they could, they couldn't change it because of, I'm talking pre-COVID.
Oh, okay.
And then if you were going to change the program, COVID prevented that from happening. Because I think that was the concern, and what were the kids actually doing?
So I'm very naive when it comes to both organizations, I'm afraid. With the National Junior Honor Society, is there a program, is it, is it written out, like you do this, you do that, is it spelled out? Checks and balances?
Yes.
And then how is, oh, the, the Olson Middle School thing? How do they, do they just fly by the seat of their pants? I'm sorry, I'm very naive when it comes to it.
This is a good question. So again, it comes down to there is a strict National Junior Honor Society constitution that actually comes from the organization itself. As part of what you're doing is your fee, you're getting access to their constitution, to their rules. And they also give you, you know, certain bylaws you're supposed to have and create as a chapter from there. You then are supposed to go from doing things based on their pillars, to try to make sure you're in, and again, their eligibility process for a student is going back to Colonel Henske's point, it's not just based on grades, it's based on multiple measures to try to get to a student in. Similar to like, I know when Dr. Jones was talking before about some of the things that influence the Lenape Council, there's a whole faculty council that has to actually see this, look over kids' applications to be part of the program as a member. It's you had, so usually the first step is you've met this criteria, you have that grade base, and then you let the students know you are eligible to apply. You then have to have those additional forms to show, hey, I've done this community service level. Here's, usually it's an essay attached, here's this, this, and this, and then the committee reviews all the applications and says, okay, yes, you've hit all those points needed for acceptance in, you can move forward and be inducted, or no, you do not.
And then how does the Olson Academic Achievers thing work?
They have that, that first step of the identify those students that would qualify at the base level initially for the National Junior Honor Society, the same type of thing for grades, and that's it. And they say, if you'd like to be a part of our organization, you can. And then once you become a part of it, they then sit down with the students and say, we'd like to discuss what level community service projects you'd like to do this year. And then the students choose the community service projects, just like they would once they got into National Honor Society, and move forward. Realistically, the two organizations are very similar. Once you actually gain entrance into the organization, the big thing is the, the gate process of what do you do when you're getting entrance? Because ultimately, the organizations themselves can be, are very similar. They're still the same idea that you're looking in terms of the academic honors. You're still looking in terms of the community service. You're still looking at all those things. And once you get into it, it's just that the really, the biggest crux of the situation is the gatekeeping aspect of how you want to have that initial entrance point into the organization.
I mean, like Steve said, sorry, go ahead.
And the name. Obviously, there's a big difference between, you know, the two organizations based on the name.
I mean, like Steve said, there's more to everything than grades. So I mean, there's more to life, there's more to jobs than grades. I mean, I wonder having that more wide-ranging application process might be better for the kids in the long run.
Sure.
I think the question that we have to decide if we're deciding this is, is the goal of the, of the Honor Society to help students to gain those abilities? So maybe kids who couldn't be in scouting or weren't a leader on paper, and to give them those skills and build them up while they're in middle school, in eighth grade, to give them those opportunities to entry and to maybe if they hadn't been in community service, to have that, to have leadership positions and things like that in the middle school before they go to high school? Or are we gonna say that for us, the barriers, you should have those things before you even enter? So do we see it as a growth mindset of you come in, and we can help you to grow and prepare and turn you into leaders? Or is it, we want those things at the gateway, and then if you don't make those, we're not gonna help you build out in this particular organization? Is that a good way of saying it, Sean, or?
Yeah, that was, was explained to me, is that was one of the different points, is once the students got in, they were still working the same idea of building that idea of community service with them. Whereas National Junior Society, you're supposed to already have demonstrated those, those traits prior to entry.
Do we have the same sets of rules written out for the Olson Academic Leaders? Someplace that I can see? There's gotta be checks and balances. There's gotta be growth charts or something.
What were the communities, yeah, with that, what were the community service projects the kids did this year?
They're actually currently doing one right now for the animal shelters. They're involved in the week of giving. I'm sorry, a couple other ones I know they were involved in as well throughout the year.
Yeah, sorry, Meg, you had a question. I jumped on you.
Yeah, I'd like to see what they're doing. How do we, how do we see what they're doing?
Could you, could you survey the parents of this year's OAL class?
Of the eighth grade parents?
Yeah, those that are, those students that are currently in OAL this year.
Those students specifically that are in OAL, Dan?
Take their pulse on, yeah.
I have to be honest, I am a little worried that the number of surveys going out is that, you know, I think at the end of the day, the board has to make a decision with the administrative team. We said on May 3rd, and I, you know, I know it's in the minutes that we were gonna survey the kids. I do want to take their, their votes seriously. It doesn't necessarily mean that I think we have to go with it, but I do want to honor their wishes, and I, you know, when does the survey stops? Is it now the seventh grade parents? Is it now the kindergarten teachers, like parents? Like when? To Judy's point, how often do we do surveys? When do we do them for this type of issue? I worry we're gonna go down the rabbit hole.
And in order, in order to find out what the OAL students are doing, wouldn't it be wise to just reach out to their advisors? And have them give you a list of the activities they perform, or, you know, the service projects that they've had this year? And whoever makes the choices, I'm sure there's something written down somewhere to say how the, these decisions are made.
I like what Megan said about with the OAL. If, once they get in, then they have that opportunity to do the service and grow. Where with Honor Society, if they don't get in, if they haven't done it, they've blown all chances.
But if you're taking it from that standpoint, you have to let the whole eighth grade in. And then they get the chance to do the leadership, to do the community service, to then meet that rank, or by the end of the year, they're not in it any longer. Is it only eighth grade? Am I missing something? Is it only eighth grade? We only do eighth grade, but online, the National Junior Honor Society is six to nine.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean you have to do it that way.
If you don't make it like sixth grade. If you don't make it in sixth grade, then you have, you can try for seventh, or try for eighth. I mean, this is, this is something that we try to grow and push and motivate our children to, you know, go forth and do more and to be more. I mean, that's what we're trying. Just to say it's a baseline academic thing, and that's gonna get you in, and all of a sudden, you got your card to get in the door, and now we're gonna make you a leader. Now, I want you to do, do stuff on the outside. I want you to keep pressing, so, and I like. And I like, yeah, about, um, and asking the advisors for information. I think that's very smart.
So I do have all their advisor information. I said, I pulled it up. They did the charitable, the selection process they did with the students. They, uh, voted on this year, they want to do the Burlington County, um, Animal Shelter, like I said, the week of giving. They also did a, uh, event in December to incorporate peers into monthly celebrations. They did a Valentine Hearts thing. They also did opportunities with, they collaborated with our student council this year. On our kindest months, um, January and February, uh, events, they did a peer tutoring they've been doing during, um, the school day. Or the, the virtual hours for grades two to five, or having OAL members tutor kids. Um, and then obviously then they had elections, uh, earlier in the year as well. So those have been the main things they tried doing.
And the, the other thing is unfortunately, um, when you think about, um, service projects. Unless you're involved in scouts or you're involved, your parents are there to guide you and help you. In this area, it's very difficult to go out and do some of these things. You know, I, I worked with the eighth grade years ago over through the church. And some of these kids, you know, they're, they're at a loss because their parents don't take them where they need to go. When they need to be there. So if the parents aren't able to get them out and help them do these community service projects. Or get them to where they need to do these community service projects, you know, you're, you're kind of limiting that.
You're limiting those kids. Think about, not everybody's going to be interested in the same thing, and that's okay. When, you know, you, you say, well, you know, that, they don't, they don't get to do these things. Uh, my first question is, is I, I don't know what the survey looked like and I'd never survey the kids. Because if they're going to find a way to do something easier, they're going to do it.
Yeah, I disagree. I think it's very important to hear our student voice on issues that directly relate to them. And I don't think it's something as easy that, you know, some of the kids said specifically, we like this because it is ours. It's not someone else's that has our name in it and there's a sense of pride they had. And I thought that was a realistic comment the kids had on there.
Sean, what was, what was the title of the survey you sent them?
OAL National slash NJHS Survey?
No. That's, that's not what I've seen.
That's the way it was saved on the top document. And then it has below this is Olson Academic Leaders Survey and explains from there.
Well, top document, meaning the name of the file? What did the kids say?
When I share it with them directly, it says OAL and I just, and then it says Olson Academic Leaders next.
Yeah. So Sean, did this go out to just the kids in OAL or did this go out to all the kids?
This was just seventh grade. We were looking to find out specifically from the kids that was going to impact for next year, which is what we talked about at the EdTech Committee.
How, how are the kids held accountable? Like they get into the program by their grades? And then what, they're assigned, um, uh, activities to do?
They keep, it's the big thing with all these organizations, usually based on your grade level, you keep your grades up, you, you keep your, you're standing in there. If you fall below, then you have issues and can be removed from the organizations. It's the same type of protocol they use for National Junior Honor Society.
So if they get in based on their grades, but then they do absolutely none of the.
They do it too. They do the things. And again, what's tough is, you know, in a normal year, we're able to have more events. They, they really didn't do, you know, the other events besides some of the fundraising things they did with donations and trying to organize different activities. For improving the school culture and climate with the student council. Um, and years past, and I've done, you know, car washes, other events and things like that that are outside that, you know, they couldn't really do based on the COVID restricted environment we had this year. But again, like I said, I think ultimately the, the actual events that occur, those types of things that happen when a student is in the event are very similar. Depending whatever the name of the organization is, I think ultimately, and going back to, I know this, what Colonel Henskey said is that, you know, do we want to look at the organization as being something? That is simply based on grades or something is based on more. And realistically, even if we want to say that we want to stick with OAL, that doesn't mean that we can't say that the entrance criteria for OAL is to be something more. If we like the idea of having it be something that is strictly tabernacles, or if we want to go towards the national entity, do you know what I'm saying? So i- if ultimately the sticking point is saying that we want our students to have more, um, measures shown besides grades to get into it. That's a difference, you know, circumstance altogether too. We can also have that conversation as we want to have, or move it towards National Junior Honor Society. And ultimately, however, you know, you as, as a group decide, as I said, the admin team, uh, has, has already said that we were, we're fully on board with any of those decisions. But again, when we had that last meeting, we did say we'd move on the direction of the students.
So, so hey, Meg?
When do we have to make this decision, Bob?
So, um, well, to get us the, the chapter started up and all that, I did reach out to them. We can still do that. But there is, you know, things that we have to get rolling from that process. Um, so ideally, if we are going to do that, it will be something that would be, um, ideal to have done by July. To be honest with you, so we can get that going and also put that, that out there to our students when they start the year. Um, this is not a change I'd recommend making in the middle of the year because you want your students, as soon as they know to come in. Hey guys, here's the criteria for this year and not the criteria is changing based on once the year begins. Does that make sense?
Yeah, where do I find that link on the Junior National Honor Society? So I can see what they require.
Um, are you?
Meg, I can send it to you. I, I've sent all that to Sean earlier this year.
Okay, I just want to see what their requirements are.
Instead of sending it between each other, why, Sean, can you just send it out to all of us?
Absolutely.
Hey, hey Meg, since we don't have to make a decision on this to July, and I think we have a few other touchpoints and we have a lot of things to talk about tonight. Do, can we just kind of table this one? Um, I think we need, I think we all have a little bit more questions. If we have to have this completed by July, Steve, the time, the time to, to move forward on this is, is pretty quick. Okay.
Can I say one?
We have a meeting in two weeks too, which is where we would actually make motions, so.
Right.
And then you have, and then you have one week to get everything submitted.
When I said, uh, July, Mr. Dokes, I did not mean necessarily July one. I just meant during that time of July to make sure that the paperwork into them.
Do you have a firm date?
Um, I would say as long as I get it, sorry, I'm trying to email that to you and having a glitch on my computer. Um, I would say as long as I get that into them by, by, you know, the middle of July, we should be okay. They seemed pretty easy with me when I talked about setting in stuff up. It's, I want to make sure we were able to set up everything we need from our end internally. Um, to make sure everything's set and established as well.
I would think they'd have an application date though posted.
Um, actually, we were pretty, we were pretty good enrolling when I talked to them before, unless something changed. Because especially we are, we would technically be starting a new chapter. Um, we did have a chapter previously, obviously, but they said they, they did not recommend based on the process they have for, um, as they call it, to, uh, bring one back. If you will, they did not recommend us going through that process. Um, we do have to go through it, their process because, if, to do it, and the problem is, it used to be a much quicker process, um, as you can. But they no longer use POs, so that, that's the biggest issue. Um, their organization has stopped doing that. So, um, it can take, um, if it's a check, whether to talk to Patty's, how we would able to do it, if it's a checker, if it's a credit card, that's, that's our timeframe. Ultimately, if it's a check, they say it's a one week turnaround. I'm sorry, credit card's a one week turnaround for processing. And if it is a check, it can be up to a month. So like I said, if we do it by July fifteenth, I think that would still give us what we need to do to make sure we, we'd update our handbook accordingly for the start of the school year.
Sean, before I would make a decision, could I have a copy for OAL of their, uh, criteria? Their goals and their intended outcomes for the students? I mean, they should have that written down somewhere with their bylaws or.
I'll get what I can.
So Gail, here's one of the, here's one of the issues, and I've, I've been following this for five years. It predates my time on the board. When National Junior Honor Society was moved out of the way in favor of OAL. It was never approved by the Board of Ed. So we effectively for five years have an illegitimate club. I find no record that it was approved within the district. So that is what has gotten me so hot for so long as to why this persists.
Yeah, well, they should have bylaws. They should, if they're, they call it an organization, they should have bylaws, they should have criteria, they should have goals. The intended outcomes, what do they expect the students to get out of this?
I'll, uh, get everything I can for, for you and send to the board for review.
Thank you. All right, Human Resources Committee, this is Saylor.
We just had our meeting before this time, so I don't have anything to present this week.
Okay. Um, our new operations committee chairperson is Vicky Shoemaker.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, and policy is Dr. McCloy.
So we have the one policy, the correct version was uploaded into everybody's board packet. So I hope everyone took a few minutes to read it. Um, the policy actually is very similar to the policy that's in place for the, um, staff, actually. So if you compare them side by side, there are some differences because the, the staffs has to be a little bit more prescriptive than they're used during school, that type of thing. Um, but most of it is very similar to what is in place for the staff currently. Um, the rest of it that is not actually lines up with our Board of Ethics and our ethics regulations that are outlined within the ethics policy.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Dan?
I do, I, I, I feel like this policy as it's written is. It could be interpreted to be very restrictive. Um, it could be really, I think, viewed as an attempt on prior restraint to a board member's First Amendment rights. To post comments in social media that reflect the comments of the board member as a parent and not of the board itself. And I think that's a major area of concern for me. If, with the policy, particularly if you look at item number six. Which is halfway down page two. Anyone has it or wants a chance to get there? I'll give you a second.
Oh, I'm getting there, hold on.
Let me know. Let me know when you're there.
You said paragraph number six?
No, item number six, midway down page two of the policy.
Okay.
So the way that's written, um, this is referring to a board member. Should not respond to any posting regarding Board of Education or school district business. Or respond to any question or inquiry posted to the board member or posted on a social network regarding Board of Education. Or school district business and shall refer any such questions or inquiries to the superintendent of schools to address as appropriate. So my issue with that is with item six, this proposed policy means essentially that a Board of Ed member cannot respond to any posting they see. Even if the question is as simple as, hey, what time does that meeting start? Or where is the agenda posted? Or who do I contact with this question? And I feel like approving this policy would frankly support withholding already disclosed information from members of the public. Who are simply asking for helper reminders from members of their community who happen to be on the tabernacle Board of Education. So if number six is included, I, I, I can't support this.
So there are ways that we could adjust this. So as the, um, lawyer said at the last meeting, we can adjust this policy. It's not a mandate policy. So it could be changed and Rock Turks found any complaints regarding Board of Education or district business. Respond to any complaints posted to the board member or posed on any social networking sites. Because if a board member were to respond to any such complaint, they would be violating their ethical obligations and will be subject to a school ethics violation.
Certainly, yep. That, that language is more permissive to allow for board members to still be viewed. As a helpful conduit of information that people might be seeking, provided it is not confidential or privileged or of a nature that should not be disclosed. So if you make those kinds of revisions, I would, would love to look at it again.
For this one, they said we could because it's not a mandated policy. Um, and responding to your, uh, First Amendment, they do talk about that in there, I believe. I thought that was covered within there. Um, and just keep in mind that the language in this, it's advised to, it's not must, or it's not shall not, or shall. So this is, is advisory to the board. It's not saying you have to do every single thing here. Obviously, most of these things, if you were to violate any of these, you would probably be violating your ethical obligations as well and you'd be subject to that school ethics complaint. Um, but just keep that in mind as well, that it's not a shall not or a shall, it's a advise to under the law.
I see that board members are advised to, yep. And, and to Dan's point, um, I kind of, I agree with him because in a district as small as ours. Um, sometimes just by the sheer virtue of what we know, it's, it's, I think it's more beneficial for us to be at least able to inform. Um, when we can, uh, versus letting certain things kind of, especially on social media, kind of go down a whole path. Where you're sitting there not feeling like you can respond and you know what the, the information is.
So I mean, Dan, how do you feel if it got changed to complaints? Because that lines up perfectly with that.
Complaints, I'm fine, I'm fine with. I'm, I'm okay with that. My, my issue, um, Kevin, is that really if, if, if we're prohibited from engaging with the community. In a, in an informative way. Um, you know, look, that's something that is so desperately needed in this district. We hear every day, we need to improve communication, you know, inbound and outbound. And three sixty and all of that, um, especially in a time when we've all been working remotely. Kids have been learning remotely. We're relying much more heavily on technology to teach and communicate and connect. Um, I just, I can't fathom not being able to engage with the community on things that are frankly, public. They've already been talked about. Maybe they just didn't make the last board meeting because they had to work or, you know, they just, they're looking for, for those little nuggets of information. That make them say, oh, okay, I get it. That's where that is.
Absolutely. And I think it's, I think it's perfectly reasonable, but I think this at least serves as a reminder not to do those things. That will violate our ethics. Um, and concerning the fact that it is in place for staff, it is in place for teachers, it's in place for the, um, supportive staff. Can you, it's only fair that it should be in place for us as well.
Yep, no, understood. It, if you're going to be able to make some light revisions to this, so that number six can be relaxed. Uh, is it possible for you, for comparison purposes, to pull and share to the board, or maybe Sean needs to do it? Um, what the comparable policies are for staff, just so we could take a look.
I'll tell you right now, it's thirty-two eighty-two and forty-two eighty-two.
Hold on. Thirty-two eighty-two and.
Forty-two eighty-two. And, and just keep in mind, we don't want to make wholesale changes to this. If we're making a ton of changes to this, it's going to be really burdensome to maintain because.
I don't want to do that to you. I know.
I, I, I'm not, I mean, when I'm not here, we want the next person to be able to do this too, and the next person after that. So we just need to make sure that it's as minimal as possible. I don't want to go wordsmithing or, or making minor tweaks. Um, but I think that one was the objectionable one, if I remember correctly, out of everything. Um, and then if we do make changes to it, Sean, it just needs to go by the, by Parker McKay as well for review.
And, and Dan, one concern I do have is that published information that we've already discussed out in public. Um, I'm fully agree upon, but anything that we go and that is like from a committee or something like that that hasn't been published yet, I think. Oh, of course not. Speaking on, of Meg, okay. I'm, I'm talking about sharing a link, I'm talking about sharing a link to the district website that has a, you know, the, the, the board minutes. Or the agenda for the upcoming meeting, um, you know, things like that.
And Steve, the, the, um, anything from committee meetings or anything like that, that hasn't just been disclosed, would be considered confidential at that point until it's disclosable. And that would be an ethics violation as well. So that's covered in the ethics policy.
One thing we also have to be very careful of is that any response we make, we have to be careful how it can be perceived by another person. Um, we can't have it be perceived as an individual's opinion. So it has to be kind of generic.
Well, it has to be, it can't be perceived as like the, the spoken word of the board. It's, this is my opinion.
Vicky, you, you do want it represented as your individual opinion as, as opposed to the board's opinion. You're not speaking, you're not speaking as a board member, you're speaking as a member of the community.
Yeah. He's right, because it.
I was going to say, generally, I don't, I don't respond. If a question is asked, just for an example, I generally just tell people that I have received it. And I have read it.
This is social media. Vicky, this is social media, so this doesn't have to do with, um.
Yeah, this is an email.
Well, we also have to be careful with our emails.
Yes, I know, but this is not pertaining to emails. That is covered, I think, separately.
In a different one?
Yep, that's already in the books.
Alright, thanks.
But outside of this policy, I do think that goes to a bigger picture, which is I don't think people understand the, the, the lim- limiting factors. The, the ethical, um, limitations that were put on, on how we respond to the public outside of board meetings. So when people say you're not responding, I just, you know, it's, there's, there's reasons behind that.
I think this is one of the reasons it came up before, uh, and one of the reasons, uh, behind this, what, behind this policy originally from Stiles Hasmei. Was the trying not only to let board members know what the corners are, but also let the public know. Because to your point, why can't you answer my question? And the answer is, I can't ethically, or the policy prevents me, and you can point somebody to that, to, just so people are more aware.
Any other questions on the policy? Okay, I'll, um, Sean, I'll just, I'll highlight those two changes for you. And I'll send it to you. And if any, I'll send it to Sean and then he can add it to, um. hopefully Parker McKay can look at it. And then let us know if they are okay with it.
No, and then if that's okay, and they give us the blessing, I guess we'll look at it, doing a first reading of this.
We'll just, if, if, if everybody's on board with that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But when would we do first reading?
I mean, I think we need one more meeting in case anybody else has more discussion. So maybe I'll hold off on sending it to Parker McKay until after the next meeting. So people have time to review those other policies as well. And then the next meeting, we can talk about it briefly, if that's okay with everyone. And then the following business meeting, we can have first reading on it. Once we've all given our input, make sure everybody's okay, and Parker McKay is giving the blessing on it.
Okay, I, I do think it's a good idea to have something like this, especially so that the public does understand what we can say, but I, I agree with Dan in terms of, you know, number six makes it sound like if I respond to somebody that hears the calendar, I'm in trouble.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Kevin? Okay. Uh, we're gonna go to unfinished business. Anybody with any unfinished business?
Meg, aren't we, I'm sorry, aren't we going to? Maybe I have it out of order. Aren't we next going to COVID Ops?
I just wanted to do unfinished business, new business, and then we're gonna go to COVID Ops.
Okay, I missed that before.
Comment.
Got it.
Doug, everybody good with that? I'm not going out of order, am I? Because then we'll finish with miscellaneous. Good? Okay. Any unfinished business, any new business?
I have one thing for new business. Since we'll be having a new board member coming on, uh, I think that would be a good time to, we were talking about the ethics when it comes to social media. But I think we need to look at our own conduct during open board meetings. So I would like to see that. If not at the July committee of the whole, then the one after that in August, because it's an issue that does have to be addressed.
So you want to review the policy?
We have ethics training once a year, but I don't think that's really enough. I think we really need to reflect. And, you know, again, I said, talk about our own conduct during open meetings. So either the next committee, the whole, or the one after that. Because I know the next one sounds like it's going to be a, a lot on it.
All right, anything else for new business? All right, Colonel Henske, we're going to turn this over to you for your presentation for the COVID Ops Advisory Committee.
Good evening. Um, so first and foremost, I want to thank everybody who took part in the committee. We formed this committee to trying to get all of, all the stakeholders in the district, the parents, the teachers, the admin team, BOE, the HSA, Education Foundation, together to kind of map out what are the issues, getting back to five full days and how we can leverage our collective resources and brain power and to, to come together to help understand what the admin team has been doing, because they've been doing a lot of work, and also to help contribute to the way forward for our district. It was the one thing that became very evident right off the bat is that this pandemic is not our friend and that the government policies that, that map out how we handle this pandemic are absolutely not our friend. And I think today's last minute tweet from Governor Murphy on masks really does highlight that. Now, a week ago, did he say we're going into fall with masks? And then a week later, we get a tweet going, oh, by the way, I'm just kidding. So it really puts, you know, there, there's a, there's a lot of changes that are very difficult for everybody to follow. And I think the admin team is probably best prepared to, and they briefed us every week on this. So I just want to kind of put that out there first and foremost. The second big point before I move forward is every district is different. Some different, some districts have lots of space. Some districts have a little bit of space. Some districts have air conditioning buildings. Some districts don't have air conditioning buildings. Some districts have privatized busing, some have contract busing. So a lot of our discussion that we had as a committee was, well, what about Medford? What about Schumong? What about, and Southampton? And there was a lot of discussion amongst the committee as to what did they have that was different that was causing them to either put in a different policy or react differently or follow the guidance in a different tone. So I just want to kind of put that out. So our first meeting was on twelve May. We'd had four meetings in four weeks. That has been a very aggressive schedule and between myself and Mr. Dokes and Ms. Corey and Mr. McCloy on the BOE, Mr. Bannon, Mr. Tean, Mrs. Palmieri, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna butcher Michelle's name. So I'm, I'm gonna ask Judy for help or Megan to help for that.
Bodily Ari.
Bodily Ari. You see, I should know that because, because, you know, I, I grew up in Staten Island, so I should know the Italian. Mrs. Lepsis, Mrs. Murphy, Mr. Miro, and Mr. Pierceack, everybody put in a lot of effort and a lot of discussion to move forward. And the first thing we did was, and it, it, we, it was a process. This was not a, we're just gonna start throwing ideas and throwing problems out there. There's, there's a process behind it. And the first thing is we formalized our mission statement, and that was really to integrate the district stakeholders, various views, and to find a common ground to return to normal operations in the quickest and safest way possible, while defining really clear and open communication methods for the staff and the parents. And after we did that, our first meeting, everybody get, got into what their objectives are. And it will tell you that everyone came with different objectives. You know, some came with the safety of the staff, some came with getting the kids back in school, some came with no masks, some came with, you know, everybody had a different objective. And what we tried to do is, as we went through this process was to, was to get all of them together and try to find common ground to get to where we wanted to be. After that, we defined what, what, what exactly was going to be the end state for the committee, because we didn't want to continue this when we didn't have to. And then we, we worked through the objectives. So after our first meeting, I'm not sure if everybody saw it or not, but Mr. Bannon started the communication. He put out a me, a letter on thirteen May, which kind of defined that the, the committee had been formed that we were pushing to plans to get the five full days of in-person learning. And he also talked about a few other features that next year's school, that our school was going to be entail, was going to be covering, like how we're doing lunching, how we're doing recess, how we're realigning the grades for the busing. So then we re-met up on the nineteenth of May and we, uh, Mrs. Wazniski came on board, Ms. Murphy came on board, the committee, and we really had an in-depth discussion on, Mr. Bannon discussed the the five full day, the pilot program that we had in the fourth grade, and what it was and what the intent was behind it. And on lasting all these discussions, Mr. Bannon and, and the admin team got peppered pretty good with questions from everybody. And as we had our course of, of discussion, there were times when we just agreed to disagree. And, you know, as the chief administrator, Mr. Bannon's got the overarching responsibility to get the, to do the operations in the school. And this committee is to help advise, give different perspectives, and also try to bring more resources to bear to help our problems. So then we discussed the, what was holding us back from going to five full days. And that was a very robust discussion. But, you know, we dissected the busing issue. We dissected that we had a lack of drivers. We, we, we talked about how the custodians, who had been working so hard through the year, didn't have any time to take any type of breaks for their leave. By contract, they have to take their leave this year. So they're taking their leave now. The custodians also fill in as alternate bus drivers. So some of the, some of the ripple effects that happened from, from COVID, we really tried to to get down to, to why it has happened and not just gloss over, well, why don't we just hire more, new, but more bus drivers, when you can't hire more bus drivers because people aren't willing to become bus drivers right now based on the way the economy and our programs are set, are structured in our, in our nation. And we talked about, why can't we contract buses? And, and, and we, we went through all that. And then we talked about, like I said, our custodial staff and their ability to clean. And we talked about how our space is utilized in, in the, the school and why the gym was half filled with equipment that they had hurriedly moved into the gym in order to open up TES in order for us to get the five half-days. And that, why can't we just move this stuff out? Because the custodial staff is already cut thin because they're on leave. Why can't we bring parents in? Because it's an insurance issue. So that's the kind of things that were, were ground through by the committee. And then we also talked about the cafeteria and, and what really became evident and clear is the CDC puts out guidance, but that isn't what we can execute on. The state puts out guidance, but that isn't everything that we can execute on. It gets down to the county has to interpret all that guidance, which is a delay. So when the CDC puts out new guidance saying, or the governor puts out new guidance saying, hey, you don't have to wear masks anymore. Congratulations. And then that though that policy has to work its way down, and we can't just arbitrarily say, because we by mandate have to follow what the Department of Health and the Department of Education looked down for us as we, as, you know, as we structure how the, the school operates. So like the six feet apart in the cafeteria, but why aren't we three feet, why are we three feet apart in the classroom? We went through all that at, at great lengths and to, to talk, get suggestions and figure out if there are better ways of doing things. So that is what, and, and we had a really big discussion about mask wearing in school, the detriment to the children. Because we know it's a, a hot topic. And we talked about the guidance. We talked to the school nurse about what was happening, were the kids coming in, in, who are wearing the masks all day? Were they, were they suffering? Were they, were they having anxiety or heat stroke or any of that kind of stuff? And we talked to the teachers, at which there, we didn't have any reports of that. We talked to the teachers about how the kids were mentally coping with having the mask on there. And that's one of the great things about having the teachers on the, on the committee, because they express, they express that the, the kids are really resilient and they're really, they're, they're doing well with having the, the masks. And that was, that was the, the, the balance of the conversation, because we have parents that they're concerned. I'm a parent. You know, and, and I, I try to view it from both a BOE and a parent perspective. We rolled into week three and we really wanted to try to open up our communication to the families. That's where coffee and conversation came up. As something we need to re-energize by one of our committee members. And we all agreed that was something a forum in which let the parents ask questions and get answers. And then subsequently, it went to the timing of it and then try to expand that to parents in the evening. And I think that's what you have, with the culmination is what we're at have tonight, which is with, which we'll go into, which is a coffee and conversation portion of this board that the board president and everybody approved on. We also are really stressing to keep the families updated as to where we are in, in, in the process. And what the difficulty with that is, is that, like I said before, we tell, if, if the committee via, the committee can't communicate directly to the public. That is not our, our role and function. We can't legally, ethically do that. We communicate through Mr. Bannon. So, and I have lots of conversations with Mr. Bannon, probably more than he cares to have, about the, the communication and how we're doing and how we're putting stuff out. Letters, you know, we, we want everybody to be involved in, in, but we might, I, we might literally put out a message and then two hours later, that might change because of the, the changing nature of the, the pandemic and also the changing rules and regulations that are happening in our state. So that was on the twenty-fifth, when we talked about how we were going to try to adjust how our kids were going to be in masks come fall. And now obviously what, what took place yesterday or today in the governor's tweet is something that will, I think we're going to address later. And then we also talked about the after-school and how different districts are different, because I, I will tell you, and I've done this too, is going, well, what about that district? They do this. And then we have, and then sometimes it takes us a little bit of time to find out what exactly they're doing, or we know what they're doing and just is applicable or not applicable to this district. But the committee really is held focusing that this district really has three priorities moving forward as far as how we get back to normal operations, which is, it's really the safety of our kids is the first and foremost thing that we have to, and, and our staff, our community is really, is number one. And that's, and the safety part is really critical to how our district and how successful we are in educating our kids. The second one is obviously to return to full five days of education as soon as possible. And the third is to provide effective communication, really get to communication models where we're really communicating with the families. And they understand where to get the information in order to, you know, to, to stay informed as to what's going on. We went back to discussing what's eliminating us from getting forward, because one of the great things about HSA and Education Foundation is they have resources. The board has a budget. We approve that budget. But HSA and Education Foundation have resources outside of that budget. So what can we do to help streamline and help the administration team get us back quicker? You know, we don't want the administration team, because we talked about the gym, the gym. The gym doesn't have HVAC. You know, it's a, it's a, it's something that's been brought up to the board a number of years, and we just, we haven't voted on getting HVAC for the gym. But now we're going into a pandemic and we have, or we're in a pandemic, we're going to go into the fall where it's going to be hot, we're going to be utilizing the gym. So how are we going to keep the temperature low in the gym where it's safe for our kids? Going back to our first tenant, which is the paramount for the safety of our children. So the admin team's coming up with, they're coming up with ideas and, and suggestions that the committee's going to vet, because and maybe we can help get to that point quicker over the summer. So that makes it easier for them to execute on a plan to open up for five full days. We also talked about cafeteria and, and when, and when we had these discussions, it was like, what's holding us back? And what is, what is cafeteria limitations, you know, six feet apart? And, and such, and why can't they eat in the classroom? It's like, well, the teachers need a break too. The teachers need to go eat as well. And, and, but that'll be addressed on over the summer where they open up space in the schools and you realign schedules and you get to some real good, solid, you know, innovation. And, and they're already working on it. It's just a matter of executing on the plan in the model that they develop under the rules that we have. And again, I go back to, we had a long discussion about the state and the county Department of Health guidance. And now that really does hinder quick execution in, in, in how we operate as a school district. You know, it just, there, there's a timeline. So just because we see it on a tweet from the governor who makes it, the tweet sound like it's always been this way when it's a brand new policy. You know, that is, doesn't mean that we can immediately execute as, 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 as a, as a school district. And so after our third meeting, Mr. Bannon put out another letter on one June, which I really kind of described all the effort of the committee, talked about coffee and conversation. It talked about this committee, the whole, talked about how we're using Tiger Paws. It talked about our top three priorities, our transportation limitations, our custodial staff. And it was really a very blow-by-blow in-depth that Mr. Bannon put out, kind of explaining where we are and where we're going as a district and what we're covering as a committee. And the final one we had, which was one June last week, is we talked about eighth grade graduation, which since that meeting has changed significantly based on the policy that came out from the state. We talked about why only four tickets per, per, per family, and now it's six tickets per family. And how we can expand and you can bring other family members and put them on the other side of the, the field. We talked about why pause a four, or why they did it like that. And it was based on the social distancing. It was based on the fact that you have an entire stadium, but you only have a limited number of kids. And the way it's structured is every parent wants to see their child. And that you could spread as many people as you want out in that stadium, but if you're that one family that's in the back forty and the far, you know, by the other end of the field, and you're going to see a speck of a child walk up and get their, get their, unless you got a high zoom lens, you're not going to be able to take any good pictures of your kid. And so the administration really worked hard to make it as well, good an event for everybody where they could see for everybody where they could see as much as they could based on the COVID limitations that we had. And I think their plan still has that um in place um to really a- and I think that's what we're really kind of kind of focused on, which is um. No, I don't think the administration has ever had an intent to, they're they're trying their best to meet the rules and also maximize the experience. And um I think they um have a good plan in place for the eighth grade graduation. We talked about the fourth day pilot program and they're going to brief us on that uh actually tomorrow is our next meeting. Um we also talked about surveys and I really want to talk about surveys for a second because this was kind of enlightening. Our surveys that we put out are intended that every family gets a voice. As one committee member put, this is not American American Idol where every family, as many times as you vote, that's how many votes you get. And that's what's happening to our surveys. So because we kind of really had a long discussion as to why the survey went out to the children for the 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 mask survey. And they go to their parents. Or was it generally put out there? And Blackboard had an issue and had a glitch and not all the families got the survey. At which point uh Mr. Bannon, the administration staff switched gears and they sent it out to all the parents. But even when they sent it to all the parents, it's kind of disturbing when parents from other districts are answering our survey. And so that's data that they have to weed through to get good data so that we really know what our parents want. So um when I, you know, when when you see people on social media going, ah, that's a great idea, I'll vote for you. It's not their right to vote for you, one family gets a vote or one per child, whatever the survey does. And so that really distracts how we as a district execute on our our stuff. And admin team has to, you know, why we and the board, I will tell you right now, demands uh a lot from Mr. Bannon. And we and the admin team, when we say, hey, what happened with the survey? And they're like, um, well, we got thirteen hundred responses for seven hundred kids. And we have to figure out where the other, what percentage is, and it's going to take some time to do it, which takes them away from the stuff that they need to do. So I'd really encourage the parents that are listening right now, which is one, one family or however the the survey structure, you get a vote. And because that really does distract how the admin team does their job. Um we talked about the com- the communication plan too. We drafted a communication plan that we want the district to move forward. Coffee and conversation is is something that we want to continue to to move forward. It's a good dialogue between the um parents and the uh um the district. And the admin team where they have one-on-one um conversations and it's a free flowing and it's not as constricted as a B O E meeting. Uh we talked about obviously to B O E meetings is is we're kind of limited because you can make public comment, we don't necessarily always can can respond to it. Uh the letters are going to go out to the district. I believe Mr. Bannon um commented that this year in order, in attempt to really keep everybody informed, that we the district's put out over forty letters. And we had a conversation about what's overkill and what's oh what's really keeping people informed and what's overkill. And that's a balance that we're trying to um help Mr. Bannon and the admin team uh balance. Uh we talked about Tiger Paws being a primary way for as reminders to the families. Um Gail, did I get that right? All right, good. Gil, as long as you get a thumbs up from Gil. And um also how we're going to utilize the school website. Because uh we want to get information out in in and I'll tell you that that in the past, the district has put out question and answer. Um so if if two or three parents ask the same question, then we put that on our website saying, everyone's asked this question, here's the answer to it. And uh we've suggested that to the admin uh team and and I think they're gravitating to it. And uh hopefully we we can have something like that out. Um because it may be some wacky ideas like a little bar chart saying this is where we're at to getting to five full days and stuff like that. And we just want to try to keep it simple where we keep you informed. Um and then uh finally, we are going to be reopening in fall. That is um we're now at that point where we we know that's going to happen. But I will tell you that add that the entire committee um in our discussion had um concerns because we want to know what the education model is going to look like. We want to know what happens if um someone gets quarantined in a classroom. Uh we want to know um how do we transition from like virtual remote that we have right now to homeschooling? And homeschooling was, you know, it's it's a model that that they vetted and we talked to the teachers and the teachers know how to do this. And it's like, okay, you know, it's just like if someone, if one of the kids gets really sick and they have to be um homeschooled, it's a temporary solution to to getting them while they're home. Well, how's that factor into, God forbid, we have um, you know, an outbreak in one of the classrooms and we have to send folks home or um kids home? That is a discussion that the committee is having and expressed as um our concern. So uh holistically, I can't thank the committee enough. We have talked a lot about a lot of things. Um I will tell you that we uh have have put uh Mr. Bannon and and his admin team through the wringer. But we but they they have been doing a lot of great work on on the plans. Um I think we also have been able to uh enlighten, enlighten, we're giving another perspective to Mr. Bannon because and and to his admin team. And what I really want to appreciate from from talking with him is when he sits there and he's like, hey, you know, that's a good point. I don't think we we consider that cool and he and he takes that one on. We are not always in agreement. We are teach, we are teachers and parents and B O E and admin and all together with our own personal opinion. On top of that, we're also human, we have different opinions about whether to mask or not mask, vaccinate or not vaccinate. We, you know, so we're going to come up with different opinions, but what we're trying to do holistically is get a good course of action that the admin team sits there and goes, you know what, that's a good way forward and that helps them define the future of this district. So pending any questions from the board uh or any additions from my fellow board members or committee members who are who are on right now. Uh that is all I have.
Actually, if you don't mind, uh one thing you mentioned today about the the governor making some uh clarification reminder, have everyone phrase what his his new announcement was. Um so at the conclusion of this meeting, we're going to have a letter go out to families notification. We are going to make an adjustment for masks effective tomorrow. If you did not see the governor's tweet and I'll see if I can pull it up for you to read the exact wording he used as that school officials are empowered to relax masking among students and staff and buildings given extreme weather conditions. So we are going to do effective tomorrow is students and staff, when they're on buses, when they're outside and they're in on air, non-air conditioned spaces, masking will be optional. Our buildings, uh T E S O M S for the most part are air conditioned. So when they're in those spaces, for the time being, we will still maintain mask wearing for right now, unless the governor changes something again. Um because this would not fall under the guidelines of the extreme conditions that it would have when they're in the non-air condition spaces. Again, like I said, if anything changes, just we're making a a switch for this one, we'll keep making those moves as need be.
So Sean, I'll play the committee role again then is why, why wouldn't we go to no masks inside the schools?
Well, one is, one of you saying here is the extreme conditions of the weather. So obviously, if you're in an air conditioned room, you can't really say that it it falls under that guidelines.
For schools with, for schools without HVAC, that would consider.
That's correct. I've talked to a number of districts and for instance, even one of our local ones in Chamon, they have one school that's not air conditioned, one school that is. So the school that's not air conditioned, they have the the masking relaxation, so to speak, of it being optional, the school that's air conditioned, they do not. Um another thing they can, so that that's kind of how we're looking at it. And that that's a lot of conversations I've been having since the governor made his announcement with superintendents um in our region and throughout the state. And a lot of them are making that move based on the air conditioning or lack thereof in their building. So we're going to do the same.
Sean, is there any, I'm sorry, any concerns with our staff?
Um we did talk to our staff as well and they're on board with this.
Sean, and the Department of Health is okay with this?
This is coming from the governor and conversations with them. We actually got a reminder as well or update from the Department of Health um about the the extreme heat and being cautious that with masking. So this seems very much in line with what they were trying to throw out earlier today as well.
Okay, because I know they can override the governor. Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you to Steve and his uh team that was uh quite extensive. Good work.
Thank you, Becky. See, I got, if I get Becky's stamp for approval, I'm happy.
Why? Because I'm the oldest?
No, ma'am.
He made you feel like you're in the military, kept us always on task.
Yeah, I I will, I will say that I did keep the 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 committee on on task a number of times. I had to tell some people to stop talking, so and and but that's okay.
All is forgiven.
All right, so Meg, that concludes my committee report.
Okay, very good. Um. Before we turn this over to public comment, I was just curious if any of yous wanted to bail, if yous wanted to wrap this up as a board meeting and continue it at as a coffee and conversation or are yous all okay just hanging in here with us? Get all the information all in one. We're all good? Good, very good. Okay, I'd like to open this meeting to public comment.
Meg, if you don't mind, before we begin, we did get some questions in advance. We did post them on our website as well, but if you if you'd like to make it easier for tonight, if we read these, we can try to limit the repetitions of questions, if that's okay with you.
Okay, I don't have them in front of me, so.
No, no, I I have them in front of me. Um I sent them to Casey and Melissa. Um and if you're okay, we'll at least read the questions and answers and kind of go from there and that might make it a little bit easier for the parents. Um so some of them had already submitted some questions for us tonight, so.
Can Sean, can these Q and A be posted on the website and can they be distributed to the board, please?
This has already been posted on the website then.
Can they be distributed to the board or not necessary?
Um we can.
Okay, is it all for the homepage? Where do I go look?
It's right away on the main homepage. Look, it'll, it says uh coffee and conversation Q and A. We'll update this after tonight if there are additional questions, obviously, that parents do ask as well. So the first question that we got, and again, we we got a number of them that were repeats. So uh apologize if if someone submitted something and your wording was not exact, we had a few parents that submitted some more questions. So when a child is sick and kept home from school, can his or her siblings attend school or must there be proof of a negative COVID test for the sick child? So this is actually dependent on the information received in the New Jersey Department of Health and the Burlington County Health Department. So siblings of a student who has symptoms um and meets COVID nineteen exclusion criteria, which is established from these organizations that what they told us should be excluded from school until the symptomatic individual receives a negative test result. If the symptomatic individual tests positive, the sibling will need to self quarantine. Um again, that is something directly from the New Jersey Department of Health and the Burlington County Health Department. Since there's not going to be a virtual option of fall, will there be quarantines? And if so, how this be handled? So the current guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health and Burlington County Health Department is that quarantines will still be required. Quarantine lengths are determined by those organizations and the COVID nineteen regional risk matrix, which they develop as well. It is our intention to provide homebound instruction for these cases unless there is a large number of students, um less than large number of students are quarantined in a given room. In that case, we'll have class live streamed. Again, we've talked a lot about trying to get rid of the live streaming for next year and move more towards a a normal uh school environment. And this is one way to help us that. And that's what Colonel Henske was talking about when he used to about homeschooling as well. What is the criteria needed for a COVID test? Um how many symptoms must be shown, et cetera? So currently for school settings, the New Jersey Department of Health recommends that students with the following symptoms be promptly isolated from others and excluded from school. Um they said at least two of the following symptoms would be fever, chills, rigors, shivers, um myalgia, which are muscle aches, headaches, sore throat, nausea or vomiting, diarrhea, fatigue, congestion or runny nose. Or one of these following symptoms. And they consider these to be, you know, if you have this, then that's it. And that's cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, new olfactory disorder and new taste disorder. So that that's their their criteria they do. And obviously, you know, we update based on the information they give us on there too. Will children be marked absent when quarantined? There's no children who are quarantining are not currently marked absent and we intend to continue that practice into the next year as well. Uh the district have COVID test on site that parents can permit use of on their child by a school nurse. If negative, could they avoid unnecessary quarantining and expenditure of parent funds and doctor visits, time off work, et cetera? Um at this time, this is actually not an option for our district, but if anything changes and we can provide COVID testing or whatever the case may be, obviously, we'll update the community on that. Uh if a child is vaccinated, do they still quarantine if they're deemed to close contact? No, so the Department of Health has stated that vaccinated individuals do not need to quarantine if they are a close contact, which follows me to the next one of uh what are we actually deeming a close contact? And the Department of Health deemed defines a close contact as being within six feet of someone with suspected or known COVID nineteen for fifteen or more minutes during a twenty-four hour period. Believe Mr. McKean, you got the next group?
I've got it, sir. I have a series of seven questions. I'll read out loud and then provide our answers. First one, please state what guidelines you will be following and commit to so that parents can follow those organizations. The district ultimately follows guidelines from the N J D O E, the New Jersey Department of Health and the Burlington County Department of Health. These may be informed from the CDC as well as other organizations. Next question, guidelines change frequently. How will the district update parents about changes so everyone district wide is clear on rules and regs? We will continue sending letters home about changes and posting updates on our website. Why will kids be able to sit at desks and eat lunch without a mask but can't in the classroom? All masking requirements stem directly from Governor Murphy's executive orders and requirements from the N J D O E and N J D O H. As you saw this afternoon, the Lenape Region superintendents have sent a letter asking for changes to current requirements for next school year. If the governor changes the mandate and let schools decide on mask or no mask, what will our district do? As Mr. Bannon stated today, we will make those changes. Next question, uh we will be able to, will we be able to go back to normal events in school? Yes, we are planning for a return of field trips, extracurricular activities, sports and the use of our building by outside groups in the fall. O A L and N J S, we've discussed that already with the Ed Tech Committee. And the last question here is scheduling for next year. We're in the process of working on our schedule for grade six to eight students will have a win period and classes will be heterogenously mixed. Perk math, E L A and Spanish one will be offered. One of our key goals for the schedule is to ensure that sixth through eighth grade students stay with the same teacher for both periods of math and E L A to improve consistency in instruction. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. McKean. Uh I have the next series of questions. What perk classes will be offered? Math, E L A and Spanish one perk will be offered. Additional enrichment opportunities such as future studies will also be offered. What will the win period look like and what will students do during this time? Win stands for what I need and this period would target each student's individual needs. How will students be tracked? Students are only tracked for purposes of perk. What standardized testing will be done and when? MAP versus Lincoln, um we have the Start Strong as a standardized test will be administered at the beginning of the school year. The timeframe is the end of September to early October. I just discussed previously about Lincoln and Maps, so we will be implementing Lincoln for the upcoming school year. Um next involves curriculum improvements. So there are curriculum updates that are underway right now for science, visual performing arts, and that's for music, art. And there's a new curriculum called Media Arts that we'll be implementing in our art program. Spanish, career readiness, life literacy and key skills. Next year, we updating social studies, health and physical education and computer science and design thinking. Additionally, we're purchasing resources for our mathematics courses, grades six through eights. The next question was implementation of new instructional models, specifically the foot classroom model. It's going to be up to the teacher to implement the model as this is an effective research-based strategy, especially in mathematics and in science. And the next question, the last one is can the administration and board please address the steps that have been taken to help provide a sufficient opt-out form for families that are not in agreement with the upcoming comprehensive sexual education state mandates? Um these new state mandates for health and physical education do not go into effect until the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. When these standards and the new curriculum go into effect, we will post the board approved curriculum online and set up a system for parents to opt out on these specific standards.
Okay. Those were all the questions that were sent in previous to the meeting. So at this time, I'd like to open questions up to the attendees that we have out there. Please don't be shy, this is your time to shine, this is the time to ask your questions, we're here to answer them. But if you do not feel comfortable addressing anything, uh maybe it's a personal matter, please feel free to reach out to the administration. We can take your question to the administration if you need us to, whatever. But we don't want anybody to feel like their questions are not being answered. So at this time, I'm going to open it up to um, we have Jennifer Tyler.
Meg, will the board have a chance to ask questions on what was presented?
Sure.
Okay, we can do it after apparent questions, maybe it gets addressed, but thank you.
Okay, sure. Jennifer Tyler?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, can you state your name and address, please?
Jen Tyler, uh three Elmwood Drive. I have a question and then I have something that I would like to please read. Um my question is, the people that are interested in putting their name in the hat for the open position on the B O E, is that going to be public knowledge who those people are ahead of time to you guys deciding who you will choose?
Um Patty, how does that process work again? So I know there was an application deadline.
Yeah, the application deadline, I.
Yeah, the application deadline, I think, has passed. And I apologize, I think it was last week. And then what's, what we're in the process of doing is coming, putting some questions together. And then at the June 21st board meeting, the board will interview the candidates that we have, and it will be done in public. It was the last meeting that was discussed. And then of what will be held in public as well.
And that meeting will be in person as well, yes?
Yes, that will be in the APR at the school.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and then with everything going on, on Facebook and such, I just felt that I really wanted to say something, so I did write something, if it's okay if I read that?
Okay.
Um, I have been living in Tabernacle for a few years now. Other than how beautiful the town is, a big reason we wanted to live here is the amazing school system. I have one child in OMS and one child starting TES in about a year. I've been in attendance of the BOE meetings since the budget issues that have been in discussion. At first, I was very proud to see our community come together and try to find a solution. Then COVID hit and made everything so much more difficult. Meetings changed to virtual. I feel like that is when people's real true colors started showing. I have been amazed by people who have become quite vocal on their opinions behind a keyboard. I am seeing adults acting like children, like they're all trying out for Mean Girls. Where were these people and their opinions when we were all meeting in person? I don't understand how grown adults can be so childish, yelling how things should be. How can you assert your opinion so strongly about all that is wrong? But you don't do anything about it other than being a keyboard warrior. You don't run for BOE. You don't join the ASA. You do nothing to be the change. How does all of this look in the eyes of our children? Is this the behavior we want them to see and think is okay? Is this how we want them to think what gets changed done? We are not behind the scenes of BOE to see full spectrum of the issues, discussions to be made, and options they have to choose from. It is not for us to know all things that make the school run. If you want to change so much, then please go about it the correct way. Please stop immaturely posting on Facebook and any other platforms. Please take a moment to think about everything that we do know they are trying to solve and then realize that there is so much more that we don't know about. I believe everyone has the right to have a voice, have and voice their opinion. Part of having the right is using it as it is intended, not abusing it. I have said publicly before, and I would like to say again, thank you to the BOE, Principal Bannon, and the whole administration for all that you do, the choices and decisions that we know about, and those that we aren't privy to. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Jen Houston?
Can you guys hear me?
Hi, Jen. Name and address, please.
Yep, Jen Houston, 23 Goose Pond Road, Tabernacle. Um, I just had more, I didn't have a question, I had a conversation piece. Um, I just wanted to, I was listening to the conversation earlier about OAL versus National Junior Honor Society, and I don't have, whatever that phrase is, I don't have a horse in this race. Um, I have an eighth grader who's graduating who is not in OAL, and I have a fifth grader who is probably not going to be an OAL candidate or National Junior Honor Society. However, I just wanted to share my opinion, having been in both National Junior Honor Society when I was younger and in NHS in high school. I feel as though the national organization offers us so much more opportunity for our kids. Um, the fact that there are multiple years to get in, the fact that it's recognized organization. I feel like there's a lot there that kind of, that kind of sets our kids up for more opportunities for success. I don't know a ton about OAL, but I know that I believe I heard that it's just the one year. Um, and I just always, I always thought that it was not in our best interest and our kids' best interest to do away with it when we got rid of it many years ago, so I just wanted to share that, that perspective.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sounds good. Thanks, Jen. We have Kate Cussy. Sorry, Kate Cussy? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Karen Cussy, 11 Acorn Drive. Um, I'm just kind of listening in on this meeting, and I gotta say, like, I'm very disheartened, I'll say maybe is the right word, that it's May, and in this community, we're just now getting a board together, committee together, to get the school back to five full days. I understand that it's been a gigantic struggle, and there's been challenges and constant direction, and I know had conversations with the Department of Health, and I know that that direction isn't always clear. However, it's May, and we're still standing in the same position that we've been in. So I'm hoping that the committee, the board, the superintendent can get everything together. So come next fall, given whatever direction's thrown, the kids can get back to school five days, because kids are not that resilient. They're tapped out between masks, between COVID, between the changing directions. They're just done. So, like I said, I asked that everybody put their whole heart, soul into this to get the kids back. I, again, I think it's, it's, it's May, and the committee was just formed, is it just grace, honestly? So that's all that I have to say.
I will say, Ms. Cussy, that are, it's not a, will, maybe back, they will be back. There's, there's no guarantee, there is a full guarantee on that one. We are not discussing any option besides a return to five full days of school come September. We have been having those discussions in many different formats before then, but Colonel Henske and the board put together this additional committee to have some additional dialogue points there. Colonel Henske, I see you want to chime in?
Yeah, Ms. Cussy, I I don't want everybody out there to think that this is just, oh, now we decided that we were going to pay attention to getting back to five full days or handling the pandemic. This was, quite frankly, a push that, that I made with some of the other board members to Mr. Bannon to try to help out what they were already doing. So there was a lot of discussion prior to with the board administration on where are we at? What are we doing? And what we were finding and hearing was, one, we had, and as, as a person who's been on the Education Foundation for, I don't know, Jen Houston could probably, and Julia Schiller could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but at least five years, when we reinvigorated that Education Foundation, and we were some of the founding members. I realized that there's, there could be this really great opportunity for us to bring Education Foundation and HSA and get the teachers involved, and Mr. Bannon brought the teachers in, just to try to see if there's better ways to move this faster and really get to them what the, what the, what's some of the issue, what's some of the frustrations that the parents were having. So I don't want us to think that the administration and the teacher and the district weren't moving forward on getting us to five full days. But I will tell you, this was just a opportunity for us to, to bring in more resources and kind of, and, and because it's great having the teacher, having the, the parents be represented going, oh, by the way, when you did X, Y, and Z, this is how it was received. And that helps the administration be more effective. So that, that really was the intent behind it. So I'm sorry, you, you feel the way you feel, because we really were, as a board, talking with the administration almost daily about where we were with the pandemic going into it, and where we are coming, as soon as we started turning, coming out of it. So this committee was not to say, hey, now it's game on. This committee was really to try to leverage more resources that we have as a district and get to, to more information out to you as a, as a parent.
Understand, and I appreciate that, Colonel, I really do. I, I just feel like it's, it's, it's so too little, too late, and it's a whole year lost of the kids being in and getting, you know, a proper education, because, you know, let's be realistic, it's not, they're not a we all know that at this point, you know, and props to the teachers, and I know everybody's working hard, and it's been a monumental task of a year for everyone. And I completely understand that. Um, I just feel that it's a shame that a whole year has gone by, and, you know, one grade level has gone back full time, and that's it, you know? I, I just, I just can't understand how this district couldn't get there. So I'm hoping over the summer, the guidelines relax, everything calms down, and, you know, we can find a way to get there. And I also think the communication needs to be improved, because I have seen the Facebook posts. I've been involved with some of the Facebook posts, like, you know, it, it just feels like the communication and the attention is there, and somehow that relationship needs to be fixed as a community as a whole, or this is just going to continue, and if it's not this issue, it's going to be the next issue. So, and that is on the board, and that's on the superintendent to fix that communication. That's not on the Facebook group. That's on a bunch of angry parents and angry community members expressing opinions that are not getting addressed. So that's on the board again, and super, and you guys to address that communication issue, because that's straight up on you.
This is Cussy, if I could just clarify one thing, you, you said we had one grade go back to full time. We actually had fourth grade go back for a two-day pilot. They are not back full time. I just didn't want you to have the wrong impression.
Understand, thank you. That makes it even worse for rape, but.
And hey, do me a favor, too, is, as, if you hear something, and I, I'll tell this to any parent that's out there. If you hear something and it doesn't make sense, and you think that it wasn't communicated well or such, I need to know that. And I want to know that. And I might, I might just give you a quick, got it, let me work on it. But that's part of what the committee, committee is really doing, because when that stuff goes out, we talk to the admin team and go, hey, that was spot on, or hey, that kind of missed the mark. And they sit there and go, well, let's reevaluate that. So, you know, I'm, HenskyS@tabschools.org, putting it out there. Um, and not that I want more emails, but I'm, I want to listen, and so please let me, let me have that, because I know, I know how hard the admin team is working to get that information out. And we want to make sure that we're trying to help guide them to being the most effective for our district, because our district is different than, than other districts. So, so please let me know.
Understand, appreciate that. I think it would go a long way if, and whenever the next board meeting occurs, if there's actually a presentation that shows the plan going forward to get to five full days. So families and the community has confidence that there's some path to get there. Because I appreciate every of these steps and walking through what the committee did, but actually seeing something on paper and the steps that are going to get there goes a long ways, too, so.
Ms. Cussy, if you didn't read, there's a letter we sent out a few weeks back that actually explained that exactly.
I don't know if the letter cuts it, though, no offense.
Okay, hey, you look, do me a favor. Shoot me an email, please.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Toby Really?
Hi, Toby Really, 14 Cut Drive. Uh, first, I just want to say thanks, Steve. That was your presentation was really detailed. It really helped me see, like, the decisions that had to be made. I actually felt like it sounded like all the questions you guys had, that the district seemed to have responses that kind of made sense. Like, maybe I didn't know them. I didn't know about the custodians or the maintenance staff about them needing to take leave. I didn't know that. But it actually made me think, like, even the things I don't know, obviously, they've been thinking them through, so I really appreciated the detail that you went in, so thank you. Um, and then earlier this evening, you guys were discussing social media. And Dan was asking if the board could respond on social media about, like, when a meeting was, or how to find the minutes from a meeting. And I'm wondering if, I know the board has to post your meeting dates in, like, the newspaper and in an office, but not, I'm sorry to the newspapers, but not as many people read the newspapers, and I'm wondering if you could post the board dates on social media. My district does it. Reminder, board meeting this evening, 7 o'clock. Especially when board meeting dates aren't on the website and/or changed, which has happened a lot this year, and I understand it's a crazy year, but there's been a lot of special board meetings, board meetings changed. Um, and a lot more people would see it on social media, or you could use the app that we have to remind people, hey, there's a board meeting tonight, 7:00 PM. That way, you know, board members like Dan wouldn't feel like they had to respond on social media to everything, because it would be there already. Um, and then last thing, for the National Junior Honor Society versus Olson Academic Leaders, I do have a horse in this race. I have a seventh grader, a sixth grader, and a third grader, and gosh, I hope they all can make it into there. I don't know if they will, but I actually agree with, I forget who said it, but with the growth mindset of going with Olson Academic Leaders, right? Like, the first step is that you're working hard at school. That's your first step to get in. But then we're going to build you as leaders. We're going to give you opportunities to learn about community service. Um, I think Vicky said that, you know, not every student's parents can take them to scouts or can take them to church to make sandwiches for, like, because we've done that. Not everybody can, and I want to recognize that although I can do that for my kids, there are lots of parents that can't for lots of reasons. Or maybe the parents, like, I, you know, I don't want to do that, but the kid really wants to be a leader. So I would say, instead of saying, hey, you have to do all this before you can be in, you know, National Junior Honor Society, that in Tabernacle, I really, what I love about this place is when I can connect with community, and I would really like to see the middle school grow leaders, so that when they get to Seneca, they are the leaders there. They don't, we don't have to have the same requirements in high, in middle school that we have in high school. Otherwise, we would have kids in high school. So, so that's how I felt about that. So those were just the three things. But thank you to the board for sharing this information. I thank you to Mr. Bannon. And I want to give Mr. McKean a shout out, because he is so adorable with those elementary students. I dropped my son off, and it was cardboard arcade, and he helped my son out of the car, and he was talking with him and stuff, and I, it's, it's quarantine, it's COVID. I really haven't had any experience with you, so I just want to give you a big shout out, because I really loved the personal connection I saw, and my son just moved back to that school like two months ago, and you already were making a connection with him, so thank you.
Sorry about that. I forgot I was muted. Thanks, Toby. Erica Vining?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, state your name and address, please.
Yes, Erica Vining, 12 Jessica Court, Tabernacle, New Jersey. Um, I was the last question on, to shock to most people who've been on these calls long enough to hear me speak a couple times on the subject. Um, so I just wanted to get on and thank you for putting in writing and responding that there will be a process for those parents that are not comfortable with certain subjects being taught. Um, I really do appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to seeing what that process looks like in the future. What I will ask is that if there's any way just to help the parents that may have challenges going into next year with some of what they may be coming across coming into next year, to be very transparent and continue to be transparent, to make sure that those parents know that they have an ability to opt out to whatever teachings that they don't feel is within their family's teachings of moral compass. And it was just a, a thank you, kudos, and looking forward to seeing what that process looks like in the future. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, Ms. Vining. And just again, on point of clarification, that is not for next year, that is for the year after.
I, I do understand that, but there are some teachings that might still be being taught going into higher grades that the parents are now becoming more aware of because of the new standards that are coming out.
I understand.
And may, you know what I mean? So if there is a, an option for coming into next year, um, I, I think that would be greatly appreciated. So not to, to continue to challenge, it's a, a thank you, but just a representation of, let's keep an open eye and transparency on that for next year, too. So it's super appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Erica. We have Amanda O'Hara.
Can you hear me?
Yep, please state your name and address, please.
It's Amanda O'Hara, 210 Oakland. Um, I just want to kind of, I want to say something, but then I do have a question. Um, so as far as the first person who spoke in the social media thing, there are some of us loud parents who are on social media that just want what's best for our kids. I've spoken to Mr. Bannon, I've expressed that, and board members have seen my emails. Um, I stand behind everything I've ever said or anything I've ever said. But what some people aren't seeing is that the parents that are loud on, you know, social media or in person, I've been to the in-person BOE meetings, too, before COVID took that away. But, um, just because we're being loud about something or we believe in something, doesn't mean we aren't prompting for a change. You're not seeing some of the other personal emails. You're not seeing where people like myself actually offered due to my position with my company to help get pricing for Plexiglas on desk, and offered to help rally parents to help pay for them. Um, so I think that comments like that are really not necessary, because that doesn't necessarily mean that people aren't saying what and doing what is coming out of their mouth. Not everybody's hiding behind a keyboard. It just happens to be the status quo right now. My question, aside from that really, is how are we in the beginning of next year? As a new parent for the district, essentially this is my second year. How are we um, like when are we supposed to be communicated all of the things we need to know for that coming year? My experience, my first year in Tabernacle, I found out uh, two days before school who my kids' teachers were going to be. The return letter was sent to my house and it was returned to school and then it was sent back to me. Maybe it was just timing on my part. We moved in in June. But how do, how do I know when we're supposed to get the information and when we need to start asking those questions? Mask, anything like this that may come up next year, like when is the deadline for parents to know this information?
So in a traditional year, Mrs. O'Hara, it does usually happen in August. Obviously for some non-traditional times. So I'd say that, you know, as we've kind of said tonight, in terms of certain things, there, there could still be updates as we saw today from the governor and stuff like that. We're expected to still have to notify our families during the summertime about changes we may see involving these types of things. Um, and ultimately then in terms of like who your student's teacher will be, or child's control being with that. Again, that type of thing usually comes out later in August.
Yeah, that was just an example. I just mean like, I just, the communication obviously needs to get a little better. And I think the earlier us parents know what our hurdles are and what our obstacles may be, the sooner we can help address them. So that September, nobody's caught off guard. Nobody is questioning that, you know?
Sure. To use last year's example, Mrs. O'Hara, we began sending out letters to the families about the things were going to happen for the next school year. As soon as we got our, our uh, information from the governor, I believe our first letter was sent out in June and then we kept them updating from there.
Okay.
We've already started sending out notifications or information to our families about things that are happening uh, for next year uh, in letters. To let them know some of the things we're already expecting to have changed in terms of structures, our times, our bus schedules have already been milled out. Some changes to our schedules, um, other things, and we'll continue to do that as they come.
Okay. Um, and one more just question or more of a suggestion. My son is going into the fifth grade and he does make very good grades. Thank, thank goodness. Um, he's a very good student, very smart. I'm bragging because I'm his mom, of course. I'm hopeful that, you know, we give him something to shoot for. And as far as the, you know, National Junior Honor Society. My question with that is I heard somebody say earlier that that is for grades six through nine, I believe, if I heard correctly. Okay. So I know that there was questions about, okay, if that you guys do it for the eighth grade and, and forgive me, what is the name of the, of the program now for eighth grade?
The current program is called the Olson Academic Leaders or O A L.
Okay. So for the O A L, and I know that there's questions about what each one does. And clearly I'm going to want to know this because I'm going to push my kids to strive to do, be their best, obviously. But would there be a way that you could start maybe that in the sixth and seventh grades and then eight? Make that the Junior Honor Society? Is there a way to hold both? So that you're bringing them in like one of the other board members recommend it, so that you can teach them to be leaders? And then give them a goal to meet to actually obtain the Junior Honor Society quota and their requirements? So that they go into high school, fill and accomplish and shoot for that honor society in high school. Just a suggestion.
Review. Um, and again, going back to National Junior Honor Society, they have multiple grades, but not every school has it for all grades. Obviously we don't have a ninth grade um, in Seneca and the Lenape District does not have Junior National Honor Society in a ninth grade. There are some school districts that have junior highs and they use it in eighth, ninth or things like that. So it just because it's available for all grades, Mrs. O'Hara, it doesn't mean that the district necessarily does, you know what I'm saying? So even though that's the idea of the N O A L or N J H S, again, regardless of which one we keep, it doesn't mean that we have to keep with the current model of only allowing eighth graders in something. We can discuss that as well.
I was just curious if there was a way to run both. Parallel to each other to get that for every parent, then every parent would have an opportunity to bring their kids in and teach them to be leaders and then to show them how to be leaders.
That would be another level of conversation for the board because that would be an additional teacher stipend for an additional advisor to run a separate organization.
Got you. Okay. Just figured I could throw it out there as a suggestion. It seems like it would appease kind of everybody from every aspect.
Understandable. Appreciate. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Lisa, G Faglio.
Hi, Lisa G Faglio, Aiden's Keep Court. The previous speaker, she actually touched on something that I was very interested in. If it's available to the students to start the preparation um, for the National Junior Honor Society. Instead of just right into eighth grade, um, that I think that's a fabulous idea. Because one of the things I've learned about um, Tabernacle and the Lenape Regional High School District is the fact that Tabernacle doesn't have a, um, a good um, reputation, I've heard. Now I've raised a son already. I've been here for 23 years. So I've raised somebody who went through um, Olson and then went through Shawnee. And so I'm, I'm, I'm aware of the situation. So I, I, they don't have a very good reputation. I, I understand that when Tabernacle kids come into the district, into Lenape District, they're, they're, they're thought of as being, oh, those kids from Tabernacle, which I find very upsetting to me. So if there's something that we can do uh, in the middle school to help the kids prepare, to get them ready. And also for kids who may not have access to Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, or doing community service or whatever. If starting National Junior Honor Society earlier, that, that would be something I think that would be beneficial for our kids going into the high school districts. Also, I, I had sent a letter earlier to Mr. Bannon um, requesting information about the process of speaking with the seventh grade students regarding um, O A L. And um, I just, for the people who are on here now, I don't know who was on it when I mentioned it last week. But um, I, I think that since we are all pretty much stakeholders in what happens to our children as they go through middle school and into high school and, and things that we need to prepare them for. I think that survey probably would be beneficial for, for even the parent of the children in seventh grade or, you know, the ones that took it, um, to be able to describe to the children what exactly O A L is and National Junior Honor Society. I think that um, when I spoke to my son, he had no idea and he's, and, and from what I understand, I didn't get a copy of the survey. But from what I understand, there was a link on there or something describing what National Junior Honor Society is or whatever the teacher had described it to the children. But he still didn't have an understanding of what it is and how it was beneficial. I think our kids are missing out on the opportunities. I think I, I'm, I'm also a product of uh, the Junior Honor Society and the National Honor Society. And I think it was very beneficial for me to be able to go through and do the processing um, of your application and everything. And it benefited for college applications and it wasn't such a slam uh, come junior year when you have to do that process. So um, I just wanted to make that point clear um, that I think um, the um, uh, O A L versus National Junior Honor Society really should be revisited and, and uh, decisions made with thought, complete thought. Because I think our kids, Tabernacle kids are missing out. Thanks. That's it.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Amy Lepsis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep. State your name and address.
Amy Lepsis, 28, Fox Hill Drive. I had a question about the perk classes for next year. I actually have two questions. This is my first question. I see math, English Language Arts and Spanish are going to be offered. Currently there is science offered for perk classes and I'm wondering if that's going to continue. And if not, how are our programs like Odyssey of the Mind and Future City going to be integrated into our, our kids' curriculum?
So we're talking about integrating them with the use of the win period and other options we have. We're looking into that still, but we're trying to make sure again, one of our ideas is try to uh, limit the tracking of our students, the homogenous tracking where it forces kids to stay together all the time throughout one grouping. Create more option for students based on their individual needs. And I believe right now we have usually most grade levels, it's two perk classes per grade level. And we've had conversations in particular about trying to make sure our students, and just as Mrs. G Faglio only brought up earlier. One of the big things we're looking at is terms of making sure our students are better prepared for when they come to Seneca. And the two core areas impact all others really are your math and your ELAs. And that's why we're trying to really put the, our emphasis on perk on those areas while still finding the ability to not ruin or lose those opportunities when it comes to the Odyssey, the Mind, Future Cities and other programs.
Okay. So next year, eighth grade will have math, English Language and Spanish, but no science perk.
That's correct.
Okay. But your intention is to continue the other programs like Future City and Odyssey in the Mind if possible.
Correct.
Okay. And the win period, um, you know, it says the period, this period will target the needs of each student. Does that entail band speech tutoring? I mean, what, what is that?
It's one of the things we've talked about is, is trying to find more time for our students, whether it's meeting with your B S I teacher, meeting with a special ed teacher, working with the band. Or getting help in the different subject areas, or in case of Odyssey in the Mind, Future Cities and the like during that time as well. So it's, it's multitude of things. We're trying to work out the schedule and one of the big things, obviously, um, the issue with that potentially has more of the COVID restrictions, but we are, are moving in a very, I think, aggressive way for next year, trying to um, look at those things. And the way that our trends are currently showing that we're not going to have to be anywhere near as restrictive with the flowing of cohorts next year and try to seize that opportunity to make sure that that period does give those students those flexible points. And then creating just class lists for those so we can track if there's an issue based on the current quarantine guidance.
Okay. So students are going to still have the opportunity to participate in whatever they want. They're not going to be, you know, not have options based on this win period if they want to do band and Future City or something like that.
That's what we're trying to work on. Yep.
Okay. Right. And lastly, I'm just going to put in my two cents on the O A L and J H S. I loved Amanda's idea of doing O A L in sixth and seventh and really getting the kids in and building them up for that experience of community service. And then transitioning to the N J H S. So the kids have that's experience as well for the application process and the requirements and guidance that that provides. So just my input. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Um, I, I keep skipping Jen Houston only because she's already spoken. So Jen, I'm coming back to you, but I'm going to call on Lisa Egan right now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi Lisa.
Hi. I just had a few things to say. I just wanted to share some information with everybody. So I was on that faculty advisory committee for National Junior Honor Society under two of the advisors, Jean Droods and then before her Candy Scola. It is a totally different organization than O A L. I'm not saying it's better or worse. I'm just sharing information just so I know a lot of the board members had questions. The students, um, they, they would go in a room and they would write their essay to apply. They would have to have all different kinds of service, um, all different types of extracurriculars. And they would write it all in an application. And then whoever the advisor was, she would gather up a faculty committee. It's an unpaid committee. It's totally volunteer. And we would spend a great deal of time reading over essays, reading over applications, of which the names would be blacked out. So we would try to keep it as open as we could, just truly based on the facts. And it is a much more vigorous process to get into National Junior Honor Society than it is O A L. And to stay in there, it was constantly being um, looked after and so forth. I will tell you this, there were many parents who were angry, who they felt like, well, um, I'll give you one example, of course, without a name. My daughter dances competitively and um, every day after school she dances for four hours. She doesn't have time to go do all these other things, but yet she's a very good academic student. So it truly was a, a well-rounded student. Again, I'm not saying it's better or it's worse, but it's, it's much different. And honestly, the students would have no way of knowing these differences because um, probably a lot of the, um, the teachers don't, unless they were involved in both things. The other thing I wanted to say was, um, Brianna Sarver and I are the student council advisors. And when I agreed to take over student council years and years ago, when Dr. Sherry asked me, I said, I will do this. However, it needs to be run differently because I think everybody can remember back to the time, it's really great to be popular and be voted into things. However, there are not always the kids that do all the work. So I said, we'll have the officers who will be voted. However, we're not going to turn anyone away from being able to do service. And that's how we run it. We do have our elections and the officers and the uh, homeroom reps and they're all voted upon. However, if any, any student in the school, up until this year, because it was different, fifth was on a different schedule. But fifth through eighth grade, they are invited to be in it, to, to be part of a service organization. And you can ask anyone in the school, you can ask the administrators, the teachers, the students. We do a great deal of service projects. Every student in the school is invited to participate. And it's like, what came first, the chicken or the egg? When you, when you go out for things and write applications for like National Junior Honor Society? How can you put a leadership if nobody ever gave you a chance to do that? Student council will do that. So you can spread that word out, fifth through eighth grade. I know fifth grade's going back on the middle school schedule. Anyone who wants to participate is invited. Mrs. Sarver and I are the two advisors. And we do not turn down people who want to participate in community service. So feel free to get that word out there. And I would be happy to answer any questions in terms of National Junior Honor Society. Like I said, I did it under two different advisors. I was part of the faculty advisory committee. I'm not saying it's better or it's worse than O A L. I think they both have their, you know, their um, appeal, whichever you're looking for. But they are very different organizations. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Kelly Fieron? Oh, last time it was Bill.
No, it's, it's Kelly.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Uh, Kelly Fieron, 11, Jessica Court. Um, couple of questions and comments. Mr. Bannon, is, it's my understanding, just from listening for the whole win period next year, that's sounding very similar to what was previously called Tiger Team Time? Is that, is there a difference? Uh, in that Tiger Team Time was kind of like a free period where kids could go do different clubs and whatever they wanted to do. And that's kind of what this win is. I'm just wondering, is it up to the student to decide where they go during this period? Is it up to the teachers? How is that going to work?
So that's a piece of the puzzle, Mrs. Fieron, that we're still working on. Cause one of the big things we want to do is make sure it's academically focused for at least a few of the days with the students. We understand that the students may still want to be involved in certain things uh, for different organizations and the like. And we understand that can happen during that timeframe. But we also need to provide, again, we had a lot of feedback uh, from our, our teachers, uh, from talking to some students that they had some supports in place before that they did not have this year. We're trying to make sure they do, especially in those core subject areas. So we're trying to structure it that way.
Okay. So it's, it's not an everyday type of thing. They could do band on Monday and, and meet with their English teacher for extra help on Tuesday and Future City on Wednesday. Like it, it can be flexible.
You, you, that's, that's much clearer because it's not every day that a teacher, like we have a different thing with our teacher's schedules and how it's going to balance out as well. So let's say, um, I'm your, your English teacher, I may not be available to meet with you every day, but you can meet, it'll be on this, such and days. And then the other days, maybe as you're doing your band or your future cities.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. As for the, you know, the O A L versus National Junior Honor Society, um, thank you, Mrs. Egan, for the clarification of the, how much different the processes of, of kids getting in. I appreciate that. I wasn't unaware of that. I don't think there's anything wrong with raising the bar for what our kids should strive for. My concern purely personal is I have an incoming eighth grader that if we do decide to switch to a different platform that is more rigorous in its inclusion criteria, I hope that those kids are given the opportunity to achieve that criteria in a timely fashion. Don't hit them over the head. Day one, by the way, you want to be in National Junior Honor Society, you better show me 30 hours of volunteer service that you've been doing when they haven't been given that opportunity for the past three years to do. I think Amanda O'Hara was on a, a good point to offer something starting in sixth grade to lead up to what to, what um, something starting in sixth grade to lead up to what National Junior Honor Society is. And, or if you want to offer it for all three, that gives the kids a stake in the game to stay in. You know, let's be honest, the kid gets into OAL November, October of eighth grade year, not a whole lot of reason to keep them. I mean, not a whole lot of reasons why they would ever be quote unquote kicked out. This was a very, you know, I have a daughter that went through OAL, was a very, you know, while it was a fine organization, it was, I'm sorry to say, it was a little loosey goosey, and that not everybody was in there for the right reasons. So I don't think there's anything wrong with raising the bar, I just want to make sure we give the eighth graders next year an opportunity to fulfill the requirements. I have no problem if they can't fill it, they can't fill it, but I think we need to make sure that they have the opportunity and no surprises coming with the fall. So I hope that you do make the decision soon, and parents are told what needs to be done. I respect that you want to hear children's voices and students' voices. I think we seem to pick and choose when we ask them. You know, we're not asking the students if they want to wear masks, we're not asking the students if they want to go back full time, but yet we take this matter of a national organization versus a local, you know, one made up, and now that's when we want to ask their opinion. Just, sorry, I appreciate it, but there's just some things that you can't just go to the seventh graders and ask. Not without asking the parents and getting the full story. You know, my daughter got the survey and fully admitted she didn't really understand it, they didn't know, she didn't even know what National Junior Honor Society was. Maybe they were just pointed a link, but these are 13-year-old kids, they're a path of least resistance. They're going to say, oh, well, we know OAL, and you admitted, half of the kids said it's easier to get into. Well, what does that tell you? That maybe this organization is not the one that we should be holding our kids to the higher standards. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Jennifer Houston.
Hello, sorry, I thought of something else I wanted to say after I spoke before. Jen Houston, 23 Goose Pond Road. I just, hearing everybody talk about OAL and NJSHS, I love the idea of having something in like fifth and sixth grade to kind of groom them and get them started, and then do National Junior Honor Society towards the end of their career. I think that's a brilliant idea. But what I wanted to say was, I'm going to be that mom talking about the masks. So the governor put out his tweet today, or whatever it was, that said, you know, in these extreme heat conditions, schools can relax their mask mandates. I gotta say, I kind of feel like this is our in, right? Like, it doesn't say if your building is air-conditioned, then they have to keep the masks on. It just says, schools can make the decision, right? It is hard to wear a mask. I was up at school today for field day, and it was brutal outside, but it was brutal in the vestibule. It's brutal in the hallway, like, it's, I go into Walmart, and it's air-conditioned, and it's brutal to wear a mask. I give you guys so much credit, because I don't know how my kids do it all day. I would literally have had to quit my job, because I don't think that I could wear a mask all day, every day, and I give you guys a ton of credit for doing it, but like, we've got, what, five, six, seven, eight, maybe? Half days of school left, like, can't we just relax the standards? I mean, we have the governor's mandate that says, you know, it's going to be really hot, you can relax your standards. Can we give the kids that? I mean, it's, it's just, it's brutal. So that's, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight? We got a lot of people on here, I'm showing 61 attendees plus the panelists, so anybody else have anything they want to ask, say? Mia?
Hello.
Hi, Mia, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Mia Ditta, 83 New Road. Sorry, one second. Sorry about that. I just wanted to thank Colonel Hensky and the New Committee for all their hard work, and the administration team, and the teachers, everyone that's been involved in this. I know that the administration has always been working on our path forward and getting the kids in school full time. But I mostly appreciate the transparency and the communication. I know that a lot of parents, including myself, you know, sometimes you jump to conclusions, sometimes you think the worst, but mostly that's because we have seen a lot of bad this past year, not just in schools, just in general, in life. And we want to protect our kids. So no communication, you know, led to a lot of miscommunication. So I just want to say, I appreciate the transparency and the honesty, and I hope it continues. And I am really looking forward to getting these kids in, you know, full day next year. And, you know, again, I appreciate everyone's efforts, and that's all I have to share for tonight.
Thanks, Mia. I realize this isn't the normal format for coffee and conversation. I hope that everybody that wanted to speak spoke. I hope everybody asked the questions that they wanted answers to and got them. If not, reach out to us, we'll do our best, get you answers. Any other hands right now? I don't see any. Okay, seeing no more hands. I'm gonna go back to our regularly scheduled program. We're going to follow up with miscellaneous.
Meg, I have a couple of questions I had alluded to before.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Dan.
I just wanted to make sure there's no more members of the public. So in just a couple, if I could. So I can do this as a board member, as a parent, if this was a coffee and conversation, you know, it would just be a question. So with number 20 about the flipped classroom model, I think the answer to that implied that different teachers might make different choices in how they deliver the material?
That's correct, that happens usually. There's a level of autonomy that teachers provide in their classroom. We get in the curriculum, we get in the resources, but a teacher therefore has autonomy in terms of trying to make sure they're using it, as long as they're using it effective practice. And the flipped classroom is one of the many models that our teachers use and are trained on to make sure they're using it as such.
So in, let's say, third grade as an example, and let's say there's three teachers. Two of them may have a traditional classroom model, and one might opt for a flipped model? Even within a grade, there can be differences?
That happens every year, you're giving the teacher, and we don't give our teachers and say that this is your direct lesson plan. We don't give them a PowerPoint and say, this is how you have to teach it. We get in the standards, we give them a curriculum.
Okay, and with numbers, I guess, ultimately, it's 14, 15, and 16 relating to PERC, and then maybe some of that spilling into the WIN period. I think you said, for instance, some of the science curriculum could be covered as part of the WIN period. Maybe that would be part of Future Cities or something like that?
Yeah, we said that Future Cities could be part of the WIN, that's correct.
So Future Cities is not kind of a come on some random days when you can type of thing? It's more of a sustained effort that goes into that. So how would that work for kids who want to do Future Cities and might also have other needs that other kids can use WIN for perhaps almost like a study hall, it sounds like?
Well, it's my understanding, I believe we also pay a stipend for Future Cities, am I correct, Mr. Doe?
I wouldn't know.
No, I thought that was one of the board approval list of stipends.
I could look it up if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I don't have the contract in front of me. So I believe that's also one of those things, if it is, I believe that could also extend after the school day as well for the student to work on there. It doesn't have to be just during the confines of the day.
Okay, all right, well, maybe take it offline, that's fine. I just was curious how the WIN period is going to work for different kids, particularly if they have an interest in science, and that's where it's going to come into play. And then you said there's going to be a Spanish one component as part of PERC?
That's what we already have.
So math, ELA, and Spanish one perk to be offered, and Future Cities offered. Okay, I'm just, I'm having trouble from a scheduling standpoint, understanding how Future Cities would fit into WIN, but we can map that out some other time.
Any other questions?
I have something. I think it was Mrs. Tyler who asked about the board position that was open. And if there was anyone who wanted to apply for that position and missed the deadline, I believe if you want to be on the November ballot, I believe that is still open. There's still time to do that. So if anybody, you wanted to apply for the current position, but missed that deadline, but you really would like to serve on the board, just go on the district's website, and you'll find the information in the petition, and you'd have to get that in. I'm looking at when the deadline is.
26 July.
When is it?
26 July.
Okay, 26th of July, you have to get that in, and to have your name on the ballot in November. That's it.
Okay, any other questions?
There is a hand up.
I gotta switch back, sorry. Casey Schaeffler?
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yep, can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Casey Schlepper, 27 Ann Drive. Sorry, I'm late to the game. I think I've mentioned before on meetings, I'm a nurse, registered nurse, just coming off my 12-hour shift, wearing a mask for the full time, so again, I apologize if I'm late and that I missed this, but I was just curious if anyone asked about the new communication from Governor Murphy about the schools kind of using their own discretion with masks come in the next few days or the rest of the year, I guess, with heat involved.
So, Ms. Schlepper, as soon as we're done this meeting, there's media broadcasts sent out to all families that we are modifying it to enable students to have the option, and staff to have the option of masks when they're inside, I'm sorry, when they're outside, when they are on school buses, and when they're in non-air-conditioned spaces.
Okay, and then also, I just wanted to say, I did see, I happened to see the, you know, the email that went out today to the governor, and I just appreciate that effort in the name of our children, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks. Lori Lampkin?
Oops, can you guys hear me?
Yep, name and address, please.
Sorry, I think I was muted there. Lori Lampkin, 17 Washington Way. I just wanted to touch quickly, I know a lot's been said about it already, but the whole thing with the OAL survey. You know, for me personally, my kid's, he's in sixth, he's going into seventh. My experience with National Honor Society is a long ways away, because I was in it, but that was a long time ago. So I'm not really knowledgeable on, you know, the current status of it. But personally, I feel like doing a survey with the children just isn't legitimate. So I have concerns about that, because, and I think someone brought this up, I mean, most of the kids are not going to vote for something that's difficult to get into, let's face it. If it's a little bit more challenging, or, and particularly if they don't understand it, and I would say that the majority of kids probably don't. You know, it's an organization that's been around for a very long time, that carries, you know, weight, and and has prestige, and 13-year-olds just don't understand that. So the fact that a survey was given to the kids, you know, it's not just affecting those kids, it's affecting all of the kids in the classes coming after. So I don't really think that's fair, that the decision was made in that manner. So I just wanted to kind of put my voice on that. But I do appreciate the work that the board and the staff has been doing. I'm happy to see that it looks like things are heading in the right direction, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Lori. I just wanted to clarify. No decision has been made yet about which route we're going for next year, correct? We just polled the kids to get their feedback on it. But ultimately, it's the board's discretion, correct?
We polled, we said we were going to do, and then present those findings to the board. This is what we're done, we've done. Again, the administration has been very clear to the EdTech Committee throughout this process, that whichever which way is fine with us, we'll make it happen, it doesn't make a difference ultimately. And if it seems, you know, you want to move us in NJSS, like we said, it's just more a matter of trying to make that decision, so we can put everything in place and go from there. When we do our posting, it just lists as Honor Society, so what that Honor Society is in terms of our advisor structure, doesn't make a difference. It's one Honor Society, it's the other Honor Society.
So Sean, you're open to the recommendation of the Board of Ed for this?
I made that very clear then.
Yeah, I have an email from you on May 28th. Meg Chamberlain and Judy Saylor were copied?
Yeah.
In this email, you state, Dan, no, we are going to move forward with OAL based on the survey and the feedback of our students. Thank you, Sean Bannon.
Well, Dan, at the time, I was actually responding, because the last EdTech, the EdTech Committee said, please survey the students, what direction the students want, we'll do. Remember, prior to that, at that meeting, I stated very clearly that as an admin team, we had discussed it, and we did not care which direction. But I thought that the committee had agreed to go with the students, that we were going to go in there. Now, at this time, we've moved towards this, that, Dan, that was what the committee had said.
The committee never agreed to move forward with the results of a student survey, never, never happened, Sean. Check the notes from the committee meeting, it states that you would explore the opportunity to survey the students. I have the notes in front of me.
I understand, Dan. From my understanding, from that time, it was we were going to move in the direction of the students, to give the students the opportunity to share their voice, as we've done time, as we were working towards.
So the email you sent on May 28th, where you said you're going to move forward with OAL, is in fact not correct. You're open to the recommendations of the board?
At that time, we're going to, from, it seems more than likely, from what we're hearing from the board tonight, there are a number of other factors. And if the board ultimately wants to go in a different direction, that is totally fine.
Okay.
And also, and also, Dan, Sean, you're, if we want the Junior Honor Society, then you have to bring before the board the stipend, because you'd have to have an additional advisor, so the board have to approve the stipend, correct?
If we moved in the direction of having both OAL and National Junior Honor Society, then that would be correct. We'd have to have, if we had just one, we do have this open, it's listed as Honor Society, and we just move in the direction of whatever Honor Society we have and going from there.
Okay.
Anybody have anything for miscellaneous? Okay, can I get a motion for adjournment? Vicki and Gail, all in favor? All opposed? All abstain? I don't know who would ever abstain. Okay, have a good night, everybody.
Good night.